They make two sized boxes.
Okay, let's get this meeting started. Welcome to the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners Budget Workshop on this May, the 11th of May, 2017. And we'll start with John Tobias Hit List Number Four. The greatest, John Tobias Greatest Hits.
Most of them end up as flops, but certainly we'll start with judicial support here. On this list is Central Services, and clearly Central Services has not yet gone, so I'm gonna hopefully hold on that till they have the opportunity to go forward. But on judicial support, we'll start with salaries. And salaries is in the same silo, but it's my error and should not be associated with a Crosswind Youth Center. So I would like to exempt out the salary bit, the 44659. And I should have updated that, but I failed to do that. So I apologize for that, as well as the benefit there of 18685.
So we're crossing those out?
Correct. So the bulk of it comes down to the Crosswind Youth Center, which I went on and visited, and is a very worthwhile organization, but it's nothing different than the community-based organizations that we decided to reduce. It, again, provides wonderful services, but the use of general fund dollars to support that definitely brings up a question of prioritization. There are some juvenile justice aspects of that. If that wanted to, if that was to be picked up within the existing budget of the sheriff, that certainly would make up for the potential cut that I outlined there. And again, it's much smaller than that 128, because we got rid of the 44 and the 18. Moving on to the Law Library. They have three FTE, and this does not touch any of that FTE. This is just a 20% reduction for print and online media. So it's very expensive to maintain all of those online memberships and to keep up with those books, which change on a periodic basis to extend that a little bit further. You know, get one extra year out of it. That's that reduction of $13,147. EMS. And I want to thank Director Prosser. I didn't get a response back for quite some time, and found out that that got bottled up for over two weeks in the county manager's office. So while I was looking for stuff, we've, it finally landed, actually, two or three days ago. But office supplies in there, I didn't get time to respond back, but we're handing out weather radios and those type of things, which sound great, but again, out of general fund, probably not the best use of resources. Again, skip over Central Services. We'll deal with that after, I hope, after they give their presentation. And the last one was Transit Services. And the director did a very good job explaining just how successful they were leveraging resources with federal funds. We took up an issue at our last commission meeting where we discussed leveraging from a two-to-one, maybe three-to-one perspective. However, these right here, I've got the bus routes right here. It's Saturday bus routes. It's Route 5, 7, 8, and then another one, I guess 129. This has got zero leverage. This is general fund money and no leverage whatsoever. Further, these routes would be still served, just not with the frequency that they are currently served. I guess it would be from once every hour to once every two hours. Again, these are on Saturday, and these individuals would still be served, just not the extent they currently being served. And I think that's a testament to the director that has done such a darn good job leveraging funds, that there is only this little bit right here of all the money that he spends that we don't get a good return on the general fund investment. So those are the proposed, you know, reduction list for judicial support, the Law Library, EMS, and Transit Services.
Pleasure, the board. Comments? Do you want to make a motion to accept? Do you want to go down the list and go one by one?
I have a question. That's all right. I was just going through when you were asking if we had questions. I want to know what we do with Crosswinds. I mean, I know a little bit about the organization only because I happen to know somebody who's part of it, but I want to hear about what we do there, what services we cover.
Absolutely. And there are some individuals representing Crosswinds here in the audience also. We have a contract that we oversee through Housing and Human Services. The funds actually sit, I believe, in general government of about 208,000. The cut of 63 to 47, and the services that they provide are really intervention-prevention diversion services for kids, to keep them out of further trouble with the juvenile justice system and out of the detention center. If you recall, the detention center is one of the county's mandated matches. And so for every child that you keep out of the detention center, there is a corresponding, I don't know if you call it savings, but there's about a $1,200 impact difference between services at the Jack, Crosswinds, and the detention center. And I get to that number because according to DJJ, our county match is approximately $131 per day that a child's at the detention center. And DJJ says that we average 11 days per child there. So that's about $1,400, just under $50 per child. The services at the Jack through Crosswinds average about $210 per child. They have for their civil citation, which falls underneath their Jack, again, another diversion program. That's a direct diversion for all law enforcement within Brevard County. They have running right now about a 7% recidivism rate, which is incredibly low when you look at the services and recidivism rates for other kids in the juvenile justice system.
And I don't want to interrupt, but I don't want to forget to ask. The diversion programs are often part of the release or the conditions of, you know, being before a judge, and when the judge makes a decision, they usually put them in some sort of diversion programs. Am I misspeaking?
And you're right. And there are those types of diversion programs. The civil citation, and please correct me if I'm wrong. The civil citation programs themselves are actually on-the-street diversion that law enforcement has as a tool they can use for kids to not even get that far into the court system. So when law enforcement comes against a child who's, I don't know, out past a curfew or doing some, I believe it's misdemeanor offense, instead of going through the court system, that law enforcement officer has the ability right there and then to give them a citation. And what the citation does is it can impose some punishment on the child, keeping them out of the justice system. And then what Crosswinds does is then all of those citations go to them, and they follow through, put services in for the family if they're needed, but also make sure that whatever the officer has determined as that punishment, if you will, is carried through. And a $63,000 cut will probably mean about 300 less kids will be able to go through the Juvenile Assessment Program, through the Jack, through Crosswinds.
From my perspective, it's truly the second chance for kids to stumble and fall. That's the way I look at it. And I don't know who among us hasn't made a mistake that we could have benefited if, one, we skated all together and afterwards we said, "Man, I'm glad nobody caught me." Not that that ever happened to me. Or if you did get caught, somebody said, "Listen, kid, you're a good kid. We're gonna give you a second chance." And if the kid's smart, he'll take advantage of it and never get arrested again. And so that's the hope. And I think the success rate is pretty indicative that does work.
And they actually track that. They do six-month follow-up with the kids. And what DJJ has found through some of their studies has been that if a child's gonna fail on a placement, it's usually within the first about 150 days. So if they're at a 7% and going up to 180 days, that's pretty good. And like I said, the agency is here if there are any further questions for them.
Just to be, just to be clear, the $63,000, if you know this, would account for what percentage of the entire budget of Crosswinds?
Oh, that I do not know.
I do, because I did a little research. Less than 2%. So by saying that, you know, or let me put it this way. That $63,000 would be less than, just to put this in perspective, one quarter, I'm sorry, one-third of the management dollars that go into this. So if they were interested in providing the same sort of services, or the fundraising dollars, by the way, that go into that, that accounts for over $400,000. But the $63,000 hit to this, again, is less than 2% of the total operating expenses from 2016.
And is that for their entire agency? Because they do do things other than the Jack. We're only talking about the 208,000 that we contract with them. They do children's residential program, and I'm sure they could speak to some of the other programs that they run.
Correct, correct. But, but again, this is, this is cost shifting. The exact same way we're looking at taking these resources and potentially putting them to roads. If they're not obligated for a specific reason, and when we put in a request, we could not find that, then, then those holes can be filled one way or another. It looks like I'm looking, you know, the United Way, in-kind contributions, private organization support, account for multiples of what the Brevard County provides for these type of services. So to say that this organization is going to fall apart because they receive less than 2% of their 2016 budget seems...
I don't think I said that I felt that they were gonna fall apart as an agency. I was speaking specifically to just the services under the Juvenile Assessment Center, which they oversee, in that these dollars are specifically to just the Juvenile Assessment Center. And the impact just to that one part of their program, of their overall agency, would be about 300 children. I cannot speak to what the rest of their budget is, or what the impact, or I would assume there would be no other impact, because these are contracted services.
We have a speaker's card here for Karen Luce.
Locke.
Locke. Sorry.
Actually, I wanted to address specifically that the cut would generally and only affect the Jack, because our other dollars are either federal or other grants that are really restricted for specific programming. The way our organization is set up, for instance, the federal dollars we receive for the shelter can only be used at the shelter. Some state dollars we receive can only be used for whatever programs. Our community-based program, which is a child welfare, independent living, is specific for those children. The Jack dollars that are given to us by the county are used specifically for the Juvenile Assessment Center, which, as Ian mentioned, does chef young people from going back into the criminal system. And apparently, when a civil citation is issued prior to even being involved with a criminal activity and actually facing a judicial process, kids tend to do much, much better. And it's not only civil citation that brings kids to Crosswinds. We also have referrals from law enforcement. It's a model that's used and endorsed by the sheriff and all chiefs of police. We meet with them quarterly to discuss what's happening within the community to young people who are engaged in criminal activity. It certainly helps to reduce activities in school when criminal behavior occurs, because the kids are sent to us. Resource officer can refer a youth to us, who would then get an assessment. Sometimes we find out that there's issues in the family that we can actually help them with. Some of it requires crisis counseling, which we do, case management. And some of it is as simple as the family's hungry and kid's shoplifting because they were trying to feed someone in the home. So those are the things we encounter at Crosswinds. And the impact would be specific to those 300 young people that come to the Juvenile Assessment Center.
Can you explain what a civil citation is, please?
Certainly. A civil citation is in lieu of an arrest. So when a young person commits a crime such as shoplifting...
Allegedly.
Allegedly commits a crime, an officer can at that point issue a civil citation in lieu of arresting the youth. The youth then gets to come to our facility where they take part in a, if it's shoplifting they're allegedly accused of doing, they would then take part in a shoplifting course. They would write a restitution sort of letter to an officer, and they would do a project. We do restorative justice for community service, and that includes doing some research on the impact of shoplifting to the community. Some kids have chosen to do posters, PowerPoints, written an editorial to a newspaper. Some visit the local Walmarts where they talk to their risk managers and write a report. And that seems to be really effective in having them understand shoplifting. That is a small component of what we do at the Jack, however. But it's part of what we do.
Thank you. So the youth is confronted with a law enforcement officer with a uniform and a badge and a gun, and told that if they admit to a crime that they potentially may not have done, and they do a poster, then they will not potentially be taken through the juvenile justice system where they could spend time away from their family in jail. That's the decision the, you know, the youth has to make at that point?
No, the family is also called at that point.
Okay, so the family is presented with that same scenario as well?
Certainly officers don't place it quite, frame it quite the way you frame it, but it's an opportunity for an officer to offer to the family the ability to, in lieu of the child being arrested and going to a court date in front of a judge, to come to Crosswinds. Our Jack director, who's here, who's also a retired sheriff after 30 years, who actually works with the officers and the families, could talk a little bit more about civil citation and how that affects the young person.
Thank you. My name is Mike Scully. I'm the director of the Juvenile Assessment Center at Crosswinds. I'm a retired Brevard County deputy sheriff, spent 33 years policing this community from, literally from MEMS to MICO. So I was a consumer of Crosswinds products throughout my law enforcement career. And I will tell you, it's been quite an education for me over the last 12 months to be part of the Crosswinds team and to learn about the depth and scopes of services that we have available for our youth. But as it relates to civil citation, the way the program works is really pretty simple. It's intended to be a diversionary program, like Ian said, an initial diversionary program to keep kids out of the juvenile justice system. And that saves very real revenue dollars on the back end by keeping these kids out of the system early on. So the way the statute is written, the way the legislature wrote the statute, the youth must admit guilt as part of the civil citation process. Not that they have to admit guilt at the onset of the process, but at some point during the process, as they move through the civil citation process, they do have to admit guilt. And as part of that, they may be required to write a letter to the officer apologizing. They may be required to, as part of the process, write a letter to the victim, whether it's a retail store or some other type of victim, admitting their involvement and admitting the error. The goal through civil citation is to help these kids, good kids, make bad decisions. We all know that. And the goal is to help keep these kids out of the juvenile justice system. So if we can do that on the front end, then we keep a lot of kids potentially out of the juvenile justice system, and we save a lot of general revenue dollars on the back end, whether it's at juvenile detention, or whether it's at a state level through the Department of Corrections, or even at a local level through the Brevard County Jail. So civil citation is an important program for, not just for our kids, but for our community. And it's something that the legislature has wholeheartedly endorsed. Our sheriff has wholeheartedly endorsed this program. Our police chiefs wholeheartedly endorse this program. And it's important for the future of our kids. If it keeps one kid out of your jail, if it keeps one kid out of our prisons, it's worthwhile. And that's what we're trying to do, is just help good kids who make bad decisions learn from this and grow from it. And it is, it's an in-depth process, and the kids do come away with something that is very tangible at the end. And again, the goal is for them to learn.
Thank you. Pleasure, the board.
That's amazing to me. I tell you what, though, I mean, we have to look at, even if you're looking at it from a moral perspective, you look at just on return investment side of it, if you're saving somebody from going to jail, I mean, we've already know, I guess, someone does end up in jail, it's a million dollars over their lifetime. And that's, that's, that's just from the return on investment. But the moral side of this is this. I mean, every kid has that opportunity to make the wrong decision. And if this is one that makes a wrong decision, it keeps them out of the system, you know, I think it's well worth it. So, so I don't want to make these cuts.
Anyone else?
I think from the accounting standpoint of it, if you're looking at the strategic goal, this is definitely meeting one of our strategic goals of lowering future problems with, with putting more money into Sheriff Ivy's budget down the road. But I, just, just from the standpoint of what you're doing in the community, I've been able to watch Crosswinds for a while, and I know you're making a great impact. And I think it's rescuing a lot of future lives out there, and you're gonna be great doctors, or whatever they're gonna do when they grow up. And I just want to thank you for what you do. And I know you give a lot of volunteer hours, and just want to thank you for it.
And for me, I'm the chairperson for the Public Safety Coordinating Council, and I know those numbers look like and what our jail looks like, and that, to me, scares me a little bit. And I know if we're able to divert some of these kids from the jail, then we're saving this money within the first quarter of the year. So for me, it's a fiscal decision to keep it in place. I mean, I'd love to learn more about it, obviously, and I've actually been offered by one of your board members to do a tour and that. I just haven't, you know, with this crazy meeting schedules we've had this last two months, I just haven't had a chance to get over there. But I'd like, I'd like to learn a little bit more about what you're doing over there.
You're welcome to tour any time.
Thanks.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. I have firsthand experience. I had a kid that I was, I was the deciding factor on whether he was gonna get the second chance, and we gave it to him. And I think it's a terrific opportunity. You folks gave me, in full disclosure, they gave me a tour a month or whatever it was ago, and I was very, very impressed. And so obviously, I support what you're doing. I think it's just a tremendous service to the community, tremendous service to the youth and their families. And I think it's a great personal sacrifice on your part, because you're dealing with an awful lot of kids that could go either way. And so it's extremely important that we have folks like you in place that are willing to do what you do. So, thank you. All right, so I guess I can count numbers, so there's no need to take a vote on that or a motion. Okay. Moving right along.
The second one was the Law Library. It was a 20% reduction in capital outlay, no impact on the three FTE. I've got a list of all of the various subscriptions here, which are numerous, and did not get any usage of any of these individual subscriptions. And to my understanding, there was no, no such accounting of that. So this is a straight across-the-board 20% cut of the capital outlay for the Law, sorry, for the Law Library.
What subscriptions will they be losing?
Well, that would be completely up to the discretion of, of whatever the director. But, I mean, I've got everything from, you know, Florida attorney fee relations to Florida real estate property litigation, corporate, I mean, I have the list right here. You know, the due diligence found out all the things that we do subscribe to. So, you know, I'm sure they would organize, find out which ones are used the most, and keep those, and then do away with the ones that aren't used as much. But if we don't set these guidelines, there's no reason to, to cut any of them.
I'd just like to know what the, you know, how that impacts their service levels. I mean, they, they serve the legal community and the lay legal community, so I really, I'd like to know that, if it's gonna impact their level of service.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Lawd. I'm on the Board of Trustees for the Law Library, and this is Annette Melinkov, our Law Librarian. And I think we can answer the question.
My question. Can we repeat that?
You have the floor.
Excuse me.
Let, just to start out, I know this is an emotional appeal, but I get into the elevator, and I see the Constitution, I see the Bill of Rights, I see all of these documents that we have that supposedly supports our rights. I just want to point out that these cuts, I'm an attorney. I don't use the Law Library like the citizens use. But I need to say that this library is used for people who cannot afford attorneys. These are people unlike ourselves. I would imagine everyone at this table has the ability to consult with a lawyer, to pay fees, and probably get good legal advice. But what Ms. Melinkov does is she serves the community who cannot afford, and which is, apparently yesterday, I think the statistic was 68% of the people are not lawyers who come in and are asking for justice. And to go through and to say that we're going to cut this particular subscription, or that particular subscription, there's no way to know when the need is there. This is unlike any public library, where we're not replacing books that have just grown old and tattered. What we're doing is updating resources, and the law changes every single day. Every time there's a decision, the law changes. And ultimately, Ms. Melinkov will give you the statistics, but I just want to point out that these reference materials, if you cut them, let's say we do not renew the subscription, ultimately, if we need that book at some point down the road, it will cost us more money. It's cheaper to every month, or whatever we do every year, I guess, every two years, to update. And Ms. Melinkov will also tell you that this particular budget cut will take us back to the same budget we had in 1991. We have every single year, and this is what the trustees do, we meet once a month, we analyze what our budget is, and we work to raise money, we charge costs, we have notary services, we're doing everything we can to generate money. But a library isn't in the business for generating money. So we have to rely on the county's resources in order to support this asset for the people of our community. And to cut 13,000 takes us back to 1991. So you can tell just by those statistics how well the Law Library is doing at this point in keeping track. We're not willy-nilly purchasing things and buying resources that we don't need. So to take us back to 1991 says we've been keeping tabs on this budget. So I, I find it amazing, you know, again, that we're just gonna cut everything, and then we have to pick and choose. Do we cut landlord-tenant? Do we cut wills and trusts and estates? When somebody has a divorce problem, are we gonna just cut that? So how do we know when it's needed?
Quick question. You say you keep track, those were your words. How many people used each one? I mean, I asked the question, I never got a response. How, I mean, that's what a library does generally, is they keep track of how many John Grisham people check out John Grisham. And if that's a popular author, then they purchase X amount of copies of that type of, you know, book. And I asked the question, I never got a response, and maybe it got bottled up, you know, so maybe you did do it, I just didn't, I just didn't see it. And I did get the first list of the 50 or 60-odd subscriptions that you do have. Did you send to the county manager's office that I never got a, if you kept track of how many times citizens logged into any one of, any one of these?
It's my understanding, and again, Ms. Melinkov...
Well, really, it's, when a book is on the shelf and someone comes in and uses it, we're not keeping track of that. We're...
These books are not checked out like a library. This is a law library where reference material will stay in the library.
But let's talk about the online subscriptions, right? So do you... So do you, do you keep track of how many times someone goes into any one of these online subscriptions? Or is there a way to track that, where you can find out that, you know, this $1,097.20 subscription to this one journal is, is referenced only once a year? And maybe that, maybe we probably don't, you know, need to continue with that, and this one is, you know, assessed, you know, 50 times a month, and this one's very important to keep? I mean, you said you kept track, that, that is the way I kept, would keep track of finding out what's the most important. How, how do you go about doing that, or do you do it that way?
Well, we keep track of the LexisNexis usage, because that's our public access terminal for all of our reporters and shepherds and secondary materials. The Westlaw subscriptions are staff, they're governmental staff licenses. So it's, it's not, we all need those subscriptions, they, they just can't be cut. We don't buy multiple copies of things unless you want to consider that we buy more than one divorce book. We've had instances where the landlord and the tenant who are in litigation together have come in at the same time, it's not, well, it's interesting, you know, that you have to have more than one book on a particular subject, it has to be preferably from a different publisher, so you have different points of view. We buy for the defense as well as for the prosecution, because that's the way our justice system is balanced. It's, it's all part of what a library does for collection development. Am I answering?
And just to put this in some perspective, these cases, cases are reported in a reporter. Those books cost $1,000 just for one book. So the library has realized that we can no longer purchase books anymore. So what we've done is gone electronic in order to give people access. So if, if somebody comes in and needs a case report, if the, if the reporter no longer is being supplied, they go to the computer, the terminals, and they access that information that way. There's a, and again, I just need to state that this library is different than the public library. We have to update the subscriptions, or the publications become useless. You can't present someone with a 2003 book when we're in 2017. So for us to go in and cut, we'd have to say, we're going to choose to get rid of a particular area of law that somebody may need. And again, these are reference books, they're not taken out of the library, they stay there. So the accounting aspect of that would be much more difficult. I think that's probably why that question wasn't answered.
So, I mean, it, so if we cut $147, this guy will fall. I mean, the way you're making, and I try to stay away from the FTE, you know, I, I thought that that was important, but if the, if the subscriptions are so vital, then I would certainly sub it out for one of the FTE there, if that would, you know, then we could keep abreast of, of all that stuff. And you're open, how many hours, how many hours a week?
So...
Eight thirty to five.
Eight thirty to five, straight through lunch.
Okay, so, a little over 40 hours a week, so, you know, you, two FTE, you have three FTE, would, would, would cover that, you'd have the exact same...
That would be very difficult to run on two people. If someone gets sick, if someone is allowed to go to lunch every once in a while, or someone goes on vacation, one person is there alone, and in the past, the board has also seen it as a security issue, to have, you know, somebody on.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, where, I, I've never been in the Law Library, where is the Law Library?
In the courthouse.
So is that the place where you have to go through a metal detector to get, to get in?
That is true, but that doesn't...
Okay, so there's a security issue in the courthouse, is that what you're telling this?
That's why they have deputies. If, if that was an issue, a non-issue, then there wouldn't be deputies trying to enforce, you know, civility in the courthouse.
We've, we've had to go deputies.
You have to go through that, correct, to get to your Law Library?
Right, but that doesn't stop someone with a mental health issue from grabbing a librarian.
We, we have had to use our silent alarm and call deputies in the past.
It, I, I would relent on the subscription for an FTE, but, you know, either way, I do, I think that it would be a little disingenuous to, to think that $1 less would provide, you know, a reduction of great services to, to the folks of...
Anyone else on the board have anything to say?
And, oh, sorry, and I just asked Mr. Bate about putting the Law Library under the other, with the other libraries, to take it out of the general fund altogether. And he said that that was something they were looking into.
Yeah, we will look into it, because, and when we just raised that issue, I do know a number of years ago, the Law Library was under the library system, and it changed, and I honestly, I just do not, it was a number of years ago, and I do not remember the reasons why, but if that, in fact, is possible, and the board has an interest in doing that, then that obviously, you know, the library has its own millage rate, that would, you would be able to move from the current general fund to that if that's possible, and we can look into it if that's, if the board has an interest in that.
Would it be managed in the same place? Because it's got to be in the courthouse.
And, and I believe, so, a number of years ago, as I recall it, it was under the direction of, generally, under the direction of the library director. When we, in fact, changed it and started funding it through the general fund as it's funded now, it is independent and does not operate under that. Whether or not we could go and, and just change the millage and leave the operational structure where they report directly to the Board of, to the trustees, et cetera, that would, something we'd have to take a look at and look with the county attorney's office. I just don't remember the specifics when that happened a number of years ago, but it is a possibility.
So what you're suggesting, suggesting is absorbing their cost and letting them continue to work where they are?
Well, I'm suggesting that if that's the board's desire, we will definitely look into that and look at what that history is to see if that's a possibility, and bring that back to the board.
Pleasure, the board.
It may make them more secure, I mean, if they're in there with the, group with the other libraries. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but, and I don't know if, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I don't know if you learned more.
I think we need to look at it, because I have vague recollection, there's a special act involved in both the library system and the Law Library, and they're different special acts. One of them restricts the expenditures to the library system, so if it's not part of the library system, you can't spend money on it. But I think that's what happened, but I will have to go back and look at it.
I'd be interested in checking that out, to see if we could do that as far as funding goes. I, we left the last meeting, and we debriefed with the staff, and I, this is one of the ones I brought up, and I said, you know, I've never been in the library, I'm so lazy, I would just hire a lawyer anyways, and like you said, I Google most everything, you know how accurate that is. But I have a deputy, as one of my legislative aides, and the marshals worked for the legal department forever, and they all looked at me like I was nuts, like, you can't get rid of this. They said, this is mostly people that don't have enough money to find legal representation. And they said they go in there and you guys actually help them, you don't get to, you know, tell them what to do, but you direct them in the right path, teach them how to use the electronic, you know, resources, which, you know, they're just, they're valuable. So by the time I was done, they, they really sold me how important the service that you give to the community as far as legal aid is. And so I, I, I think what you do is very, a very important service for our community, especially for low-income people. So, thank you.
Commissioner Smith, I think that's a great idea to buy Commissioner Zinnardi to investigate the funding mechanism for that, because that's a compromise that potentially would not lower any amount of service, yet free up potentially quite a few dollars for us to use for infrastructure.
So you're suggesting if it could be absorbed, if the operation as it exists today, where it exists, could be absorbed into the library system?
I wish I came up with that idea, but that would be Commissioner Zinnardi that...
All right, well...
And, and I would just ask that if, if as it stands right now, I would like at least the options to find out what we can do to make it happen. Like, I don't want to just be, and I'm not suggesting, of course, that you would ever do this, but I don't want to just be told that, no, we can't do it. I want to see if there are any options at all on how we can make that happen.
We can do that.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, staff, so you have direction. You're going to see what options exist, and you'll bring that back to us for further discussion. Okay, moving right along.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Emergency management, they had a $30,000, which was line item for office supplies, and, you know, for the amount of FTE, that was extraordinarily high compared to other departments. You know, there were things, copies, brochures, you know, weather radios. Again, weather radios are a great idea, I don't know that the government is necessarily the best supplier of said weather radios, but, and again, I just, I mean, I have the emails here, but Director Prosser had sent that to the county manager's office, and it sat at the county manager's office for more than two weeks before we finally got a response within the last, you know, three or four days. So that's why I would have broken it down to find out how many copies, how much brochure, so that's why I had to arbitrarily come up again with 20%, but there being weather radios in there, I don't know that, and I don't know that may be a $5 expense, or that may be a 40, you know, not $40,000 expense, a $20,000 expense, but I just didn't have the, I just got this information here very recently, and I don't want to blame the director because she turned it around in the amount of time, less time than, than what I asked for it. It's just, I just got access to it. So that's a 20% cut to operating supplies.
Ms. Prosser, would you like to?
Sure. So the weather radios were actually a one-time purchase, so that's not something we're planning on purchasing going forward, that was to have those in inventory. We use them when we go out and do outreach presentations at fairs and to different types of public events, where we speak to the public and educate them on how they should be informed about any emergencies. And with regard to the brochures, we've actually switched this year from using a commercial vendor for the printing of our brochures. So we now use Pride, which is the prison system, if you're not familiar with that. So that's actually going to decrease our costs on that. So this cut is something we would be able to absorb.
Pleasure, the board.
I think she just stated that they were going to go ahead with it, because we're kind of looking at last year's budget number, so you're, you're good making that cut?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, well, if you're good with it, do we need a motion, Mr. Knox?
She didn't just, she... Correct.
Yeah, we'll just give the staff directions.
And, again, thank you for turning that around so quickly. Can you send me the, the breakdown of that, because that, that may have been too much, I, I don't know, but can you, can you send me how you spent that, and what you, our needs are, and how much you'll be saving, you know, with Pride as you move forward into next year? That would be very helpful.
Okay, moving along to central services.
Yeah, we hadn't, we hadn't had the central services presentation.
No, aren't they going to, aren't they going to give us their presentation?
Oh, did you, did you want to go, but the last cut was transit services, that we already had the transit services presentation.
I don't think he's discussed the cuts he wants to do. No.
Transit services? Okay, Jim.
Again, this was routes that receive service, this just increases the frequency of service, and it was my understanding that this was 100% general fund with very little or no leverage, unlike the other routes, that the director has done such a good job leveraging.
You are correct, but routes five, seven, and eight, they run weekdays, so this, this 154,000 actually added Saturday service on those.
Saturday, Saturday, okay, sorry.
You're right, that's, and routes one and 29 were, had two-hour, service every two hours, we got it down to every hour, so that was reducing the headway. So one and 29 existed before, now it has more intensive service. And then for all the routes, we were able to use existing buses, because they weren't operating on those days, the physical buses themselves.
Is this what we added?
Oh, well, there was an extra transfer at 7:00 out here. At the latest, you can make a transfer at the Government Center, was at 6:00, and we added to 7:00.
But isn't this what we added last year?
Yeah, this is what we added last year, yes. We started this service in December.
Well, the reason we added it was because people had to get to work, that was the biggest complaint we had. People work in multiple jobs, not just working to one job to another, and going one job to another job to another job. We've heard this for years, I think, and it's been a big need. I've got a lot of feedback of how grateful people are to get to work now in time. So, again, it's, it's, people do work weekends, so that's what it's for.
A question, because I know we had this conversation during the commission meeting, and it, it seems like some areas are, it's important for people to get to work, like Commissioner Barfield was just saying. So since we've been running this, is there a good ridership on it?
I'm sorry, I don't even know where these are, you have to forgive me, but... That's all right. The, the ridership increase over, and I'm not going to count December, because that was in half a month, and so it's always a little bit hard to compare. We're picking up somewhere in the neighborhood of the last three to four months, we got an extra like 4,600 trips, so that would be about 13,000 trips more. We're a 2 million trip system, but when you look at it, routes five, seven, and eight, they're not the heavily used routes, you know, you're not, we're not carrying 30, 40 an hour on those routes, so you're not going to see the huge numbers you would normally see. But even on routes one and 29, which existed themselves, I didn't do the percentage, but you know, here's 2,000 trips, you're, they've increased by 30, 40% over, what, a comparison to the same months last year.
Is that even for the weekends?
That's, that's just for the Saturday, for the, this extra Saturday service. And I couldn't compare the weekday, that extra hour, it doesn't kind of wash out in the numbers that way.
Can I ask, sorry, can I ask you to repeat that? You said there were about, how many extra roughly?
It's roughly 4,622 trips, somewhere, and I'm going to say that the actual number's 4,622, but I haven't been able, the March ridership and April ridership is still in a draft, we haven't gone back through to make sure it's all correct.
Is that per month, or?
That's total.
Over how, over what period?
Over three to, three, excuse me, four months, four months, and that would be...
Roughly 13,000?
No, no, 4,600 over the four months, so it'd be somewhere 13,000 for the year.
Okay.
Yeah.
With an added increase of $154,000?
Yep.
So this is about $11 a ride, a trip that we're paying, just to be very clear?
Yep.
And I don't, I wasn't on the board, I didn't know why. Was there any indication, was there any study done to find out that these, and I, I did this, Route 5 was Mims-Titusville, Route 7 is Vera-Roclich, Route 8 is West Cocoa.
Yes.
My staff did. So, that those were the areas that had the most, highest need of workers in Brevard County on Saturday, or were those done for political reasons?
Well, I wouldn't use the word political. In the transit world, you, you have two different competing how you provide service. You have ridership service, so the best example is 520 and the A1 corridor, you know, we're going to carry gobs of people back and forth all day long. Operating between Mims and Titusville, you're not going to carry as many, so that's what we look at as terms of coverage. So political's not the right word, but we're a government service, so, you know, we're going to provide as much service across the county as we can. The reason why these didn't have Saturday service, these fall into the coverage area. So they, you know, so they were the last ones to get service. So we don't expect them to be carrying the 30 to 40 hour, we don't expect them to be costing us $3 or $4 a trip. We expect these to be a little bit more expensive, a little bit lower ridership, but what it does on Saturdays, it completes the network, so...
So my question is, if it truly was an effort to get as many people to work as possible, and you had a pile of $154,000, and you wanted to, you know, keep that cost as low as possible, is this the most efficient way to get people to their jobs by having Saturday bus route service on Route 5, 7, and 8?
No, because then you would, you would put more on 4 and 9 and Route 25, but then we got...
Where it's roughly, you said $4?
Yeah, somewhere in that neck of the woods, $3 to $4 a trip.
So like a third the cost, okay?
Per trip, yes.
Per trip, I'm sorry. So we're paying by a factor of three to get people, I mean, roughly...
Yeah, but you're always going to have routes that do... Yeah, but you're always going to have routes that do way better in cost per trip and efficiencies and so...
I got it. But if it was the intent to get people to their jobs, there are more efficient ways by a factor of three roughly?
True, but you also won't catch all, you know, you won't catch all the jobs. You know, we had the hole in Rockledge and Viera that, you know, down the railroad, a few other areas in Viera we couldn't cover. Anything, if you lived in MIMS, you couldn't get to a job to go into Titusville. And then the route eight is the West Cocoa. So if those, and a lot of those folks work in the service industry in the beach, so they would have to figure out a way to get into Cocoa to get to a bus route.
I get it. Again, I was just trying to find efficiency here because that's what we're looking for. So there, so if we're doing match, there are ways, multiples, but I appreciate the explanation and thank you for the question.
I would, I mean, I know, obviously, we would love to enter your brain because of the data that you have constantly moving up there. I would like to see something on paper, obviously, as user-friendly as possible to look at those numbers. Because I remember that survey you did before, and I remember this even just a few years ago, you were talking about employment being the number one. And that's what I want to look at. I want to see what, why those people are taking the bus. How many people are riding the bus on Saturdays? And if those, I mean, if it can be used somewhere else, then fine, but I think we have to be careful before we remove service once we've given it. You know, or maybe half of this is good and the other half needs to be, I don't know that without looking at it, but I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
That's like, I never would have, obviously, other cities came to you about that item we had on our agenda, but that was because there was a need. And I had asked him pointedly when in my office, is there a need? Because I don't want that, I don't want to do this because it'll make people happy. I want to do this only if there's a need. And you said definitely there's a need, so I was okay with moving it forward. So it wasn't political for me, I promise. So it was, it was about getting people to work. And so I'm glad, again, thanks, thank you to the board for supporting that. But I want to see those numbers before, if that's okay.
Okay, yep, we can get you the ridership numbers.
And I'll try to keep you out of the political fire if that's...
Thanks. But, and then we just completed, it's, the report's back a little bit draft, but we did a ridership, a survey of the riders, November through January. So we have some, you know, the demographics, why are they riding, what they want to see, where they get the information. We have all that too.
Wonderful. And then that takes you out of it. You don't have to make those decisions or those statements and it doesn't put you in a bad spot.
Thanks.
That would be good. If you started a service, then you only had like one or two people on a Saturday riding. You would rethink that and maybe...
Yep.
Yeah, I thought you would. You know, I don't know if this is the place for it, but we talk about this in our office a bit since you guys gave us that survey a while ago, of maybe eventually down the road going to like a public service Uber system. So like instead of running big buses, we could, you know, run lower economy vehicles out to take, you know, routes taking people for small trips and maybe it'd be more cost efficient. I just thought I'd throw that out right now since I had you here.
Yeah, that, we've been reading, you know, autonomous vehicles is what we look at. We do have different sized buses, but when you're looking at the cost of operating a bus, it's not the bus, it's the employee, it's the fuel, it's the insurance. That's, that's the big operating cost, that's the big difference. You gain the efficiencies by having 30 people on the bus of one driver versus seven.
Gotcha.
So that's where it lowers the cost. And I got, because I got you guys up here, when you look at autonomous vehicles, especially with bus service, or, you know, self-driving cars, it's, it may not help the bus service, it's how much it's going to cost the people to ride it. So if it still costs them $5, $6, $7, $8 a trip to ride a car that doesn't have a driver, you're still going to have people that need bus service because they can't afford that. So for us, that's what we really want to see is if you can get the self-driving, you get the economy down to $2 or $3 a trip, then that will start affecting bus service for us. We don't go after what, we call them choice riders, not the fair word. We don't go after the choice riders. We go after the transit-dependent folks.
We're going to eventually start trying to target that market, market of choice riders?
Actually, and you'll see in the survey there is, the consultants are surprised by how many, I forget the exact question that was asked, do you have another means to ride the bus or then this trip or something? And it was higher than what they were expecting. So we're actually catching some people that have a choice more than we had even thought we're targeting, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim, these, these routes that we're talking about, weren't these an experimental choice in the first place to see if in fact they were worthwhile?
Actually, yes, all, five, seven, and eight, all at three different times. Route five, I'm going back a little bit of history. Route one and 29, just from Titusville to Melbourne, it used to run every two hours and we had a bunch of citizens come to the board, wanted it every hour. And this is more than 10 years ago and the board said, make it every hour, here's the funding, and go to MIMS. And so we separated it out, you know, so the MIMS to Titusville. So that was the experiment to see if they're riding, and they were riding. Route eight, which is West Cocoa, that's the same thing, that was the citizens coming to the board. What we did, and it's still a little bit that way, we figured out, our terminal's there in Cocoa, so we have deadheading buses going back and forth. So instead of somebody had a half hour, we put it out on the road and called it Route eight. So that's been experimented. And that one's gone, my staff always reminds me, it's done way better than I ever predicted. It's almost triple the ridership per hour than I thought it would do. And then route seven was a service development fund, three, four years ago, where the state paid the 50 percent and that ended, and then the board picked up the other half, the other 50 percent, because people were riding it. So they were all experimental, different times or different reasons.
Right. And you've determined that it was worthwhile keeping them?
Yes.
Okay. So you're going to produce some numbers for us?
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent.
Will you also, sorry, will you produce some numbers that would provide us with this $154,000? If our, if our goal was truly to get people to jobs, how we could do that most efficiently?
We'll try, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can see it, figure out a word. Yep.
Efficiently from a cost perspective.
Yeah, of course.
Because it's efficient way.
Yeah, that was my pause, I'm not exactly, I know what you're trying to say, just trying to figure out, yeah, to get the numbers the best way, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for, that you're leveraging. You do a phenomenal job.
We try, thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Teresa, you're up.
I'm Teresa Camerata, Central Services Director, and with me is Kim Cox, the Finance Officer for Central Services. Central Services has four programs: asset management, facilities, fleet services, and Our adopted budget for '16-'17 was $15.5 million. Of that, the general fund transfers $9 million, internal service charges $5.2 million, and our capital balance forward was $1.4 million. General fund transfer of $9 million is divided between facilities, almost 1 point, or 8.2, asset $400,000, and purchasing $400,000. With that, this is the breakdown of the general fund. The facility salary and benefits is $3 million, utility bills $2.1 million, building services $1 million, building maintenance $1.1 million, property insurance $540,000, and then the asset and purchasing general fund transfers. The internal service charges $5.2 million are user service fees and charges for services. The biggest chunk is the fuel charges, that is the fuel that we sell at the nine fuel stations, $2.2 million. Fleet parts that are replacement parts on our vehicles, $750,000. Facilities rent, which is paid through the cost allocation plan of $850,000, and fleet repairs of $875,000, and the maintenance and construction fees of $400,000. And this is just a small part of what asset management does for us, but I wanted to keep it to showing you the money. This slide represents the money returned to departments from the sale of surplus property. We had a big year in 2016 because of a $300,000 property sale. But typically, it's closer to $600,000 and $700,000 in revenue generated through surplus equipment. Oh, I skipped one. Let me see if I can do this. The work that the purchasing services does for us allows the county to save money for all departments through their formal solicitations, which is the bids, proposals, and quotes. The total for 2016 in formal solicitations was over $72 million, and of that, they avoided the cost of almost $12 million through the bidding process. So that is the difference between what all, if they took all the high bids versus putting them out competitively, negotiating them. So the difference is $11.6 million avoided costs for their, for their work. Over the years, this goes back to 2007, facilities general fund has diminished from about $12 million down to closer to eight. And however, our square footage has continued to climb from 1.3 million square feet. Now, this is just our general fund buildings, 1.3 million square feet to 1.6 million. So it makes it difficult to keep the buildings in the condition that would be, you know, This graph represents the deterioration of a system, is losing about 40 percent of its quality over the first 75 percent of the useful life expectancy of a building component. So the rate of deterioration of a building component is like a ball rolling down a hill. So at the, at the next 40 percent, you're going to drop significantly so that by deferring the maintenance beyond the 75 percent, your useful, of the useful life of a piece of equipment, your, your dollars go from $1 repairs to $4 or $5 multiplier. So the decision to underfund your maintenance will always have an adverse effect. The cost of ownership is going to go up regardless of the funding, and the longer you defer it, the more it costs. The industry standard, according to the International Facility Management Association, is 2 to 4 percent per year for building maintenance. And we have been typically funded at less than 1 percent. Our aggregate building replacement cost is about $380 million. Someone else needs to work this. So this is the, the list of the facility needs for architectural modifications, and this is taken from our five-year work plan. So what we do in facilities is every year we work out, we adjust it based on priorities and by emergencies, but we program out about five years' worth of work for our general fund buildings. So in the architectural modifications, right now, for five years out, our total is $5,430,000. For our electrical modifications, we are at $4,120,000. But I will tell you that the biggest chunk of this $4 million is the repair of the cell doors in the detention center.
Teresa, if you're talking about modifications, are you talking about not preventive maintenance or corrective maintenance? Or is it, are you talking about that it's just because it's falling apart, it has to be, I mean, I'm not clear on what you mean by that?
For modifications on the, on the architectural, it would be renovations of restrooms, like the restroom on the floor at your building. It's 1970, maybe?
Maybe, 60s, maybe.
It's, you know, so it's in rough shape and it doesn't meet the ADA code.
Okay.
So we have not been able to modify that one. We did the first floor because there's more public there.
Okay.
And we did that, I should spend six or seven years.
So you're not, this isn't about where things are failing? I mean, it's...
It's both.
Okay.
It's both. But under, under architectural modifications, the reason I call it modifications is some of it's stucco, it could be weatherproofing, it could be weather stripping, it could be waterproofing. We had problems with water seeping through bricks and causing mold between the block and the brick fascia. It could be carpet replacement or tile replacement, so. On the electrical, we just discovered that the original elevator equipment at the sixth story in Titusville at 400 South Street, the Brevard County Government Center North, needs new controls. That project is estimated at, I think, a half a million dollars. The fire alarm replacements that we have on our list right now, total $365,000, we intend to do the, we're doing the design on the sixth story this year, and then we are going to ask for the balance in our CIP, but that project is $280,000. And that one is that the fire alarm is antiquated, it's causing us a lot of trouble calls, and it doesn't, it isn't standardized to what we use now. The HVAC modifications, $5.6 million. We anticipate doing $305,000 in 2018, which will include air handlers at the sixth story building, air handlers here at Viera, and a chiller replacement at the Titusville courthouse. We have $5.7 million in pavement and ground needs. For 2018, we intend to do the gate controllers at Moore Justice Center, sidewalks at Melbourne Courthouse, and seal and stripe the Sarno parking lot. And Commissioner, these are based on what we typically are able to get in funding is about a million to $2 million, so we kind of go with that every year as to what we might likely obtain funding for. Plumbing modifications is $1,560,000. This year, or 2018, we estimate we will need about $50,000 to renovate showers in a section of the jail where the tile is failing. So it's a security risk that the prisoners could, or inmates, could break off tile and use it for a weapon. So that's, that's highest on our priority list for plumbing. Am I doing wrong, Jill? Thank you. Roof replacements right now are $1.4 million. We have no roof replacements planned for 2018 unless something fails. Our structural modifications for 2018, $50,000 to demolish the modular that asset hopes to move out of soon. We have an old guard tower at the detention center that needs to come down. It's kind of, nobody's ever used it, I don't think, and it's... It's kind of, nobody's ever used it, I don't think, and it's, or maybe they did once upon a time, but it's a safety issue now because it's a dilapidated guard tower that's wood construction. And then the Rockledge Health Department is further down the list in structural modifications, but it's becoming more and more clear that we're going to need to demolish that building.
Do you have a timeframe that you're looking at?
The Rockledge Health Department, we've pushed it out to 2021, simply because we have other projects in 19 and 20 that are a high priority. Oops, we're too far. So this is just a synopsis for our critical needs for 2018. We're looking at $1,360,000, but we're faced with a total facility needs for the five-year plan of almost $24 million. In Fleet Services, we have renovated all but one of the fuel tank systems, so we've got some carryforward that will, no, we have no carryforward?
No, per.
Sorry. I thought we had carryforward for that. So this is what we need for the Fleet Services, to replace the Flake Road fueling station, install video security at seven of the fuel sites, and fuel pump replacements for five fuel sites. So half a million dollars for Fleet Services. This is just something I wanted to share, that Central Services has had a 16% turnover rate, and that is because we cannot compete with the outside world. We have, this is our salary comparison. Now, the only thing I could compare to, the only thing I could get my hands on was indeed.com. But we're starting air conditioning mechanics at $1792 an hour, and outside, the average in Florida is $24 an hour. Automotive mechanics, $1479, and outside, they can make $16. Electricians, $17.08, and on the outside, they can make $18.42. And plumbers, we pay $16.27, and they can make $19.83 on average. This year, we lost eight mechanics. And we have hired on some at below the starting salary with the expectation that they will get their license before they finish their first year. But we have, we are down two mechanics in the Fleet Services out of five.
Are they eligible to participate in the FRS?
Yes.
So do you find people leaving because, because there's not a big disparity in most of these, in outside wages versus inside? And I would think with the Fleet Service, I mean, FRS, that would more than make up with that.
Well-
But I've employed those people, and they don't think about five years, 10 years, 20 years from now, they think about today.
Right. But I think there's also a difference in Fleet, and maybe Rob can help me out, but they, what they charge for an hour, if, when they bill a customer for a job, if they can get that job done, and if it's a four-hour job and they charge $50 an hour, they're going to make $200 whether they get the job done in two and a half hours, or four hours, or five hours. So if they're an efficient mechanic, they can make more money. So if they go outside, they're going to make more. And the same thing with the electricians.
So you're not talking about flat rate numbers you're talking about?
Right. But that is, I mean, that's the only thing I could compare it to. Rob has had one position open in Fleet for months, unable to fill it, and then we lost another one last week.
Have we looked at outsourcing this, compared with the cost if we put it out for bids, and then what our cost is, and see which one's a better price?
We do outsource. We have term contracts with air conditioning, plumbing, electrical contractors, and the hourly rate is higher. But we use those for emergencies, and we use those for our billable customers if we can't send one of our trade workers.
I know the hourly rate would be higher, but if you add all the benefits and everything else to it, with all that added, is it still that much higher?
I don't have that.
And efficiency, how fast they can get it done versus?
I don't have that answer. I'm sorry.
You know, I've seen before in other government industry where you go out, you put, you actually compare how you do the work to what they can do it for. You send a bid out, well, you do this, you look and see what it is, how, what the cost is versus letting someone else do it. It's easier, better to do it in-house, you do it in-house. Especially with auto mechanics, I would think that might be, you let the local community have an opportunity to bid on a lot of that stuff.
Plus, they're not on the clock eight, nine hours.
Exactly.
You know what I mean, automatically.
Have the overhead attached to it, yeah.
Do you get applications for these often, for people looking for these jobs? Because I'm just going to throw this out, I would never even have thought to apply to the county for a job. Maybe with some of these positions, we should do like a hiring campaign and let people know that they can apply for jobs in the county, and maybe we could pick up some potential help that way also.
The Job Service here in Brevard occasionally does a job fair.
Yeah.
And we have advertised through that, and we have never had anybody apply through that job, through the workforce.
Maybe even Facebook, Facebook will throw out, you know, hey, come work for your county, and maybe we'd get some applications in.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
I know other cities have done just that, and I think a lot of people have asked me, because of course, they find out you're with the county, how do I apply? What jobs do you have? They don't know where to start. And if you go to our website, and I don't mean this to sound mean, it's a little crowded and a little overwhelming for somebody trying to navigate exactly what departments are in need and stuff, so that's a good idea.
And then in our procurement office, we've lost two this year, three in the last several years of procurement officers who have left and gone to cities in Brevard for, you know, a lot more money. So the difference in the Brevard cities is about 15%. So I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Board questions?
I have one, I have another one. See, John, I do talk. But on the fuel costs, how do y'all buy your fuel? I mean, I know there's ways you can, you can buy it on a futures level, you can, there's different things you can do, it's saved by bulk, or do y'all just buy it off of, you know, supply schedule, or how do y'all do that?
I'm going to ask-
Currently, we're running off the school board contract. I wonder how they get it?
Leslie, can you address that?
How do they do it? It's a co-op bid that we have here in county and the cities, and the school board is the lead agency.
Okay. So, I mean, what is their mechanism for? They buy it just bulk, they buy it?
Right.
I mean, they don't go off of futures or any of that stuff?
No.
Okay.
We have looked at that in the past. That was brought up several years ago about doing that, so it kind of went away.
Okay. Because if you continually look at, you can buy, in fact, that's what Southwest Airlines, that's how they really got a big boost, they bought it at a futures price. Basically, you buy it, put the money aside, and you've got that price locked in, so.
Yeah, City of Palm Bay did that several years back, and I think they did finally get out of that.
Okay.
Because of some issues with it.
Okay.
Thanks, Leslie.
Yeah, when you and I took office, I suggested the futures purchases too. And in fact, Jim, are you still in here?
Yeah.
He and I talked extensively about that, about futures. And I said, well, you know, if it goes up six cents in the next year, you make out. Well, good that he didn't listen to me, because over the next year, it went down about a buck and a half. So we would have been stuck there at four bucks, we were $3.50 a gallon, when in reality, we wound up buying it for $2.50 a gallon, or $2.45 or whatever. So futures is a dicey game. It's like the stock market buying futures. You know, you're really rolling the dice, and with government money, I don't think that's a great idea.
We did it at Palm Bay, and we saved a boatload of money, at least for a good while, and then it got a little bit, I say a little scary only, we just saw that it was probably going to head the other way, so that's when the city got out.
Right.
But the city saved a ton of money doing that.
You have to have a good crystal ball. Okay. Pleasure to the board.
Are we going through this step?
We can.
I don't know, Mr. Tabaya.
Okay, you want to go with the reduction list for the Central Services? This was quite some time ago, so since we did not have the list of priority needs on future projects, and I guess the plan that was just outlaid, I'd like to hold off on the ones that there is no specific reduction on, so that's like the capital outlay facilities. I'd like to spend a little more time reviewing that before we go with an arbitrary number. So I would pull off that first one there. But the cell phones, this was the, this was the department that had really cool cell phones. And it's a little scary to me that the organization that is in charge of purchasing is the one that is purchasing the really cool cell phones. I mean, we're talking iPhone 7s, 6s, 6+es, 6s, SEs. So I guess we bought into that idea up there that we need to replace things because I guess the iPhone 6 is better than the 5, and the 7 is better than the 6. But either way, I have a reduction for cell phones of $9,500. And it's in a couple lines here, so I think there's another $500 there. And Mr. Abate mentioned that he's doing a system-wide approach when looking at cell phones. I would ask that you please not only look at the reimbursement, but of course, and I'm sure you're doing this as well, look at the hardware that is being selected, because again-
We absolutely are. As a matter of fact, part of what we're seeing, and we're going to get more, we will have all the detail, is in some instances, some of those phones, which, you know, I can understand the perspective of it being, if someone went out and tried to purchase some of those phones, what the costs are, we all know what some of those smartphones can cost. We're looking at it because of our ability and the types of contracts we have. In some cases, I can tell you, I think public, actually, Jeff McKnight indicated that the phones are coming along with the purchases, and there's not an additional cost outside of the monthly fee. Now, I'm just telling you, we'll have the monthly fee for you, we'll show you the whole thing. So, you know, we're not done with that, we're looking at it, but to your point, we will definitely look at the hardware costs, if they are in addition to what we're paying with the fees, and we'll disclose all that, and we'll make sure that across the board, we're taking advantage of the best opportunities, and we'll let you know what that is.
And I appreciate that, but this was the only department that I saw with the really cool cell phones. If that was indicative, I think we would see everyone having iPhones 7s and 8s and all those wonderful toys. This was the only department where I saw that when we went through, you know, in a really detailed approach. So we saw that other people had, you know, those phones, I mean, but this is the only one that had these late-model iPhones.
So this is in the same category as you reporting back to us?
We'll come back and give you all that information.
So, okay, so we'll move on from there.
The, there is a FAPo conference of $3,000. While it is in Florida, there is no requirement for certification. There's a change in policy here that is a $859 reduction, and the $34,680 one is a partial reduction due to some non-reoccurring purchases of pallet jacks. So that one is a non-reoccurring cost right there, but just want to make sure that that's not filled with something else. So again, take out the ones, and I will report back to the board on the specific projects, but take out the ones that are percentage-wise, I guess, take out the phones until we hear a little bit more. So that would, the non-reoccurring should have no issues there. So it's just, comes down to the $3,000 for the conference, $209 for unnecessary membership, and whatever it is, $859 for a policy change.
Do you want to eliminate the need for $3,000 for travel and per diem purchasing? What is, where the trips consist of?
The purchasing agents are certified, they're not required to be certified, but it's certainly to our benefit that they're certified. And the educational reimbursement, we do have some employees that are required to recertify for, for instance, our plumber is recertified every other year for his backflow prevention certification, which saves us hundreds of dollars every year. And then as far as any other educational, that could be the, in keeping with the county's initiative for employee development. If this is taken from last year, I can't address what we have in for next year.
But just on the FAPo conference website, I mean, I'm just going to quote here, "It's a networking event, it's a vendor trade show." Again, it's, I'm sure certifications are neat and cool, but if it's not a necessity, though it is in Florida, that is wonderful, and I guess it was, you know, in Orlando, but still, $3,000 for networking, and to see some, you know, vendors, I don't know is the wisest use of, but that's directly off the website.
Leslie Rothering is our purchasing manager, I'd like her to address that.
How many people are involved in that conference that go?
I'm sorry, is it-
That can't just be one person, correct? No, it's not one person, it's for four people in the office. And the FAPo that's offered in Florida, we take advantage of that for training, for our certification, is we can, the staff can go to the training there, receive credits at a reduced rate compared to what it would cost us to take it on webinars, or take the training through our national governmental purchasing organization. So this is a savings actually for us, we try to take advantage of that. The classes that are being offered, the networking is part of that, that is, I think that's a great tool that they offer. But at the trade show for this year that they have, in addition to the networking, they also offer bid tampering, they talk about Florida statutes, the new requirements, strategic planning, that's a conference class, critical services regarding invitations to negotiate, there's panel discussions on procurement challenges. So it's more than just networking, it's more than just a trade show, so.
But again, are those certifications required for employment with Brevard County? Yes or no?
They're not required.
Thank you.
But back in 2007, the board did recognize that the certification is important to have. It is training that purchasing agents have to have, I believe, to work in our office. One of the, with the purchasing agents in Brevard, which is a little different than the cities that you see in Brevard, is they have to process all the way from a pencil and pen, all the way to a construction project, to a request for qualifications, so they have to know the entire process for every method of procurement. It's not just you have one category and you specialize just in that. So the training is imperative that they have it. We don't have that luxury. We only have five people in our office currently. When you look at, not just the salaries, you look at the comparison of staff ratio to the budget that the county has, the millions of dollars that go through the office, I think that it's imperative that they do have some type of training or certification.
You guys only have five?
Five.
Staff?
And when you look at the staff ratio, I can tell you, I'm going to- And when you look at the staff ratio, I can tell you, I'm going to say Palm Bay, I use Palm Bay a lot, very good comparison, a benchmark, they have five people compared to our five people, six people in the office. We've lost staff to the Palm Bay office, we've lost staff to the city of Tiesfeld that has a $300,000 budget compared to, you know, what we have. And we still function and operate in the money, the budget that goes through our office and the amount of money that we spend with the five staff, and I think it's imperative that they have to have training.
I have to say though, I know, if you step back and look at purchasing across the board, various government agencies, that's where the biggest risk is.
Sure.
And so certifications that you get, I'm sure go through all the details, and you have, it's an industry standard probably?
Yes.
And so that industry standard is, okay, you know these people have met all these requirements, understand all that goes along with this, so there's no question.
There is quite a bit, it's not just processing requisitions and processing POs, there's government regulations, there's several, just alone the board policies alone and administrative orders. You have the FEMA requirements, grant requirements, everything with procurement-related transactions through our office. We have the six people in our office are the only ones authorized to issue POs for the county in excess of $175 million. So there's some risk there, and you need to have the appropriate training. And the training that's offered through this Orlando location, the seminar, we can receive, the training for that is at a reduced rate of over 50% from what we would take. And I could provide those.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I think the registration is $209, or it was last year, is that correct?
That was, no, the numbers that I provided to your office was what the average cost would be for the purchasing agent to take that if we went through FAPo. If we went outside of FAPo and did the same exact training for the number of credits the agents will receive, there's a difference of about $500 per agent.
So, but my question is, what's the FAPo conference cost?
It depends on how many days you go.
What you provided me with was $209.
Right, and that was for the number of credits that we would receive for that.
Okay, so how many people attended?
They haven't attended yet.
Or how many people attended last year, I'm sorry?
There will be four attending this year.
So 200 times four is 800?
Right.
And yet you're-
The registration itself runs about $1,200.
Okay, so these numbers still aren't adding up to, help me here, sorry, I apologize.
Okay, I'm not sure what you're looking at.
$1,200 times, how many people are you planning on going?
What are, are you looking at the response back? I don't think I did that.
You said four, 1,200 times four is $4,800, and you're only asking for 3,000? And my question is, where's the other, where's the $1,800 addition?
The $1,800 is, because you're taking that out of this year's budget. The registration probably runs between 900 and 1,200. And it depends on the number of events you go to. If it's over five days, if you go for two days and take advantage of courses, and that's the other thing we look at, what's being offered, so that we can spend the least amount but still take advantage of all the credits. So there's four days that you can register, some are included, some are part of the registration. If you go for the four days, it's this much, if you go three days or if you go two days. So it just depends which events you take. So I would say between 900 and 1,200. But the 3,000 that's currently in there this year, that was for the hotel and reservation scover, which was not approved, so it's still in there.
That was going to be my question.
But the travel is part of that.
So you're staying, you're staying in Orlando?
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to, that was my question.
No, no, when that came through, that was not approved.
Right. You know, and normally, I don't have an issue with this, obviously, I want you to be the most educated person you can be at your job.
Right.
But if four people are going to a conference for a couple of days and you only have five people in your office, how do you rectify that with staff?
I stay behind, I let the staff know.
So one person stays behind and handles the office for four days?
I will while they're gone, yes.
Okay.
We do, and we will be short, we will let the departments know, and we work with them.
And I used to take issue with this with Palm Bay, and we, obviously, again, and I know you guys are probably sick of me saying this, but I served during some really tight times where we were furloughing people, we were, everything travel on the agenda had to be approved by the council, which has since been removed, and they've been spending travel money like crazy over there. But I was really critical of this training because I understand that, you know, you have to have things required for your job, but the only thing I have to compare it to is myself.
Right.
You know, I'm a nurse, and I obviously have to have credits, I have to have CEUs. And, you know, you know, other than what I'm doing right now as a nurse, most of what I did, I affected people's safety and well-being, and I was responsible for their health and safety. And my employer doesn't cover that cost, my employer, and that's still required for me to keep up my nursing license through the state.
Right.
Because that's expected of me when I'm hired, you're supposed to be a professional, you're supposed to keep up on your certifications, this is what you do. And anything above and beyond, which I did pay for my own training for a few different certifications that I had, came out of my pocket, and that made me more marketable, and it made me more desirable. And perhaps it would make you in a better position to negotiate a different salary, I don't know.
Sure.
That's between you and the manager, but that's the issue that I have. And I, like I said, we could talk about how much benefit you get from conferences, I've been to plenty of conferences out of my own pocket, but where I've seen, they've had good classes, they have, I've seen good ones and bad ones. But I don't think that the county should be the one on the hook for paying for somebody's conference when, you know, in reality, most of them are trade shows, they're dinners, it's networking, it's socializing. And I know you do get some benefit, because I believe you when you say it, I don't think that you would lie to this board.
Yes.
But I think that that is, the onus is on the person, the professional that seeks the position and that is hired in that position, if they want to have certifications, especially if they're not required. It's great that you have them, but that makes you marketable and that makes you desirable for that position. So if it's not that expensive to attend, then that would be a cost that you should bear as an employee, that I bear in the private sector, that my colleagues bear, that other professionals that I know bear. But again, obviously, it's an issue that most employees don't agree with, but-
Well, and it starts with the salaries that they're offered, to ask them to pay that. You know, when I look at, and I think Teresa put it up there, the difference, the starting salary for the purchasing agent one in the county versus purchasing agent one in Palm Bay.
Right.
There's a $2 difference.
I could show you the same thing with public safety, with fire department, with police department.
Yeah, there is, there is.
But it doesn't mean necessarily that the municipality's in the right price range either.
Right.
Maybe the municipalities need to come down some.
Right.
Because I think what people forget is that, you know, you don't work for us, you work for the people. I mean, we're servants of the people, so.
So yeah, asking them to pay that, so that's kind of always a challenge, is trying to get employees to pay that, so.
For me, the key word is professionals. I don't know if anybody making 18 bucks or 16 bucks an hour can be considered a professional. So that's where I would differ from that.
That's maybe your opinion, but I, somebody can very darn well be a professional, 18 dollars an hour.
Okay. Well, I have professional, I have professional standards working for me.
Wow.
Okay. Thoughts, board?
So I guess I brought it up, so I'll go ahead and make the motion, or, you know, to go ahead and nix the $3,000 for the, again, quote, "networking event" and vendor trade show.
I'll second.
Okay, and that's the $3,000?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Tabaya to reduce the spending for the travel and per diem purchasing by $3,000, seconded by Commissioner Isnardi. Any discussion, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I say nay. Fails 3-2.
Failed 2-3.
2-3, failed 2-3. Something like that. Okay, moving right along, what do we have next?
Mr. Chairman, Tabaya requests a short break before we go on to the next one.
You can absolutely request that. We'll come back at 10, that's 10 minutes. Okay, Board of County Commissioners, we're here.
Okay, Commissioners, I'm going to be very, very brief with this presentation. This budget represents the budget for the five commission offices, and so the total budget is $1.6 million. 96% of that is for compensation and benefits of the five district offices. The way that the budget is comprised is there are, there's a separate cost center for each office, and then there's also a cost center for shared administrative expenses. And so the next slide shows those shared administrative expenses. The largest portion of that is travel at $18,000. You also have telephones, copy machine rentals, office and operating supplies, and then that capital outlay, that represents primarily computer replacements, furniture, things of that nature. So that is the commission office's budget. And unless there's any questions.
Just out of curiosity, who makes the most copies? Do you have that?
I don't have the answer to that.
Could be me, I'm just curious.
It's not me, because my printer never works, so, we're good.
And we don't do color in my office, so we save a few pennies there. I have a question, this travel, $18,000, what does that consist of?
That would consist of mileage reimbursements or any overnight out-of-state travel, so that is the adopted budget for the current fiscal year.
Okay, and so when the actual, what were the actual numbers last year? Do you have any idea?
I probably do have that, give me one second. I believe it was actually higher, because I believe we did reduce that. It was, it was $27,503 last year. So, you know, as we develop the budget each year, the budget office does contact the offices and ask if they're anticipating doing any significant travel, if they're anticipating purchasing new equipment, computers. And so based on the responses we got, we did reduce that travel in the current year, so.
Jill?
Yes.
Do you break, my understanding, none of us have used, gone out of, gone out of the county on travel, is that?
That question was asked of me this morning. I did review our budget versus actual, and the only costs to date for this fiscal year were the mileage reimbursements, so there's no overnight travel that has posted an SAP. There's a possibility that those reimbursement requests just haven't gone through county finance and been posted at this point.
Okay, and to follow up on that, so the bulk of this would be the in-county travel, correct?
The bulk of, the bulk of what has posted to date, which I think is around $6,000, that would be mileage reimbursements for the staff as they, they travel using their own personal vehicles and requesting that mileage reimbursement in accordance with county policy.
And county policy, and help me, I don't know, and I don't, I'm pretty sure my staff isn't doing it, because I'd be signing, and, but if you're traveling to a meeting or a workshop, I understand, you know, the reimbursement. But if you're going to a pancake breakfast or an art museum opening or a parade, is that eligible for a reimbursement, mileage reimbursement if it's in the district by a commissioner? And if so, do any, I don't know, do any of us take those type of?
I would say that we would be looking at what the, each commission, commissioner would have the responsibility to authorize what they thought was work-related travel on that mileage reimbursement form, and we would honor if they said it was. I have not personally looked at it, so I couldn't tell you if there's any, if such submittals were made or not. But I would think that if the commission thought it related to the, to duties or the role of the county commission office, that we would, we would process that and county finance would accept it.
And those reimbursements are submitted to county finance, I believe that they are the ones that develop and maintain that policy for travel, but I can look into that. But those do all get submitted, and county finance reviews the mileage reimbursement request and determines if those expenses are in accordance with policy as part of their review.
I haven't been to any pancake breakfast, but I've been to HOA meetings and St. Patty's Day parades. My staff does the miles, I don't know, I just, whatever they think it, but I can tell you, if I wasn't the commissioner, I wouldn't be making those trips, so it has to be commissioner-related.
I know myself, I, if I require my staff to be somewhere, then I almost, you know, always, I make sure that they put that mileage on the mileage forms that I sign, but-
Sure, again, it comes down to, if you weren't the commissioner, you wouldn't have the staff, and they wouldn't be going.
But that's only my staff, I myself don't claim any mileage, because that's part of my job, I believe. So if I require, you know, my staffer was here, I finally sent her home, because my staff has been so lovely and patient through all these really long meetings, I would expect that she would put that on her expense report, because she's not expecting to have to travel out here from the office, so.
I think if we want to set up some policy, you know, it'd be a topic of discussion, our office, we set up anywhere we go outside of District 1, inside District 1, we just kind of absorb it. But, you know, like, we have some staff members maybe that aren't as financially, you know, as others, so I would hate to put that on the burden of the employee if they got to be somewhere as far as county necessity, because county employees do that also, I'm sure when they have to travel, they're able to put in mileage. But I have no problem with it, I don't mistrust any of you guys, I know some of y'all even donate all your paychecks back to it. So I think, you know, whatever you want to do, if you want to set up policy, it's fine with me, but I have no problems with thinking you guys are mishandling any kind of funds whatsoever as far as county money.
Sorry if I wasn't clear, and I didn't mean to single out-
I didn't think you did.
I didn't mean to single out staff.
Didn't think you did.
I think staff, absolutely correct, should be treated, just, you know, the county commissioners understand that when we ran for this office, that there would be certain travel-related expenses, and, you know, then to turn around and, you know, potentially, you know, bill the county for those travel-related expenditures seems a little bit, it was no surprise that we would be going to, you know, pancake breakfasts or, you know, parades or anything like that. So yeah, I would like to look at a policy that-
Don't we already have a policy? I mean-
It sounds like we don't, it sounds like-
I think we have a policy.
Well, there's a, the board has a travel policy, so I will be sure to, you know, get that to each commissioner so that you can look at it, because if you want us to bring it back and make modifications, we'd be happy to, you know, to look at that.
Well, we've heard your perspective, my perspective is that if you want me to do this job as your county commissioner, you pay me a salary. That salary does not include using my car to go to and from functions. And so if you want me to go to and from functions as part of my job, then I supply the car, you can supply the gas. I don't think that's an outrageous assumption.
Is, out of curiosity, is the reimbursement purely for gas, or is it per mile, which includes, you know, a whole bunch of things outside of gas?
Well, I don't know what it is, 50 cents a mile?
How much is it per mile?
There's-
If it's 51-
I'm looking that up right now.
55 cents?
It's close to 50, 55 cents, so it covers per mile.
So unless you're driving an 18-wheeler, you're getting more than gas.
I think it's consistent with, very close, yes.
I think that's much what IRS wants, because we do that in the county, and it covers wear and tear on cars, tires, all those amounts. They try, they try to get specific with those numbers for tax purposes, so.
My point is, it's just more than gas.
Well, yeah, it does, it compensates you for your, the use of your car, absolutely. But it's not like it's a moneymaker. This job isn't a moneymaker. For some of us, it might be all the money we've ever made in our lives, but for others, it's, I mean, more than this in 1980, just for clarification.
I don't think for any of us, we make more money sitting up here in this job than we would make in the private sector.
I don't think any of us are made for the money, so.
But then I think you could raise the question, not all of us could make, get a job in the private sector. So that's, that's, that could be debated as well. Do you have an answer?
I'm still trying to find it, I apologize.
It doesn't matter. Okay, so any more questions for Board of County Commissioners?
Yes, can you, do we have a policy on memberships?
There is a policy on memberships, I can get that to you. I believe there's a policy.
Thank you.
If you want to give me a moment, I'll look that up as well.
No, that's, that's fine, it's just-
We'll send you a copy of it.
Thank you.
Okay, County Attorney's Office. Okay, County Attorney's Office.
Okay, I want to thank the board, and certainly Mr. Avate for giving me the first opportunity in many, 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 many years of actually doing a budget presentation. I guess that's because my budget's probably 14 one-hundredths of percent of a whole county budget, so I've never had to do one of these before in my rec, my recent memory. So I hope you indulge me a little bit because I won't be here in 10 months, as you all know, so this is my last budget presentation. And I want to leave this office in better condition than I found it when I got here 24 years ago. They had 15 employees, today we have 14. So we have managed to whittle down the number over that period of time. What I'm going to talk about today at the end of the presentation is a lot about transition from when I'm not here any longer. And the reason I'm going to bring that up is because there are two people behind me in line at drop who are Eden Bentley and Shannon Wilson, who won't be here in five years. So there's going to be a lot of training we've got to do in the next three, five years because I'm not going to be here to do a lot of it. And that's going to require some effort on our part, but it's also going to require us to retain people in the future that can be able to do the job we do, because all that experience is going to be gone in five years. And with that backdrop, I think I need to give you a couple of examples of why experience makes a difference in the county attorney's job. You're sitting in an example of that. This complex is part of a bigger piece of property that the Dudas used to own, 38,000 acres worth. And part of the Duda property was the Wetman system that you see out at the end of Wickham Road that serves the sewer plant. When we condemned that 240 acres, Duda wanted $9 million for it. We did not believe it was worth $9 million. We went all over, and their attitude was, anything that ends up next to a sewer plant is going to be diminished in value because of all the smell and all the terrible things that go on out there. Because we've had experience in eminent domain, Eden and I both, we went around looking for property that was similar to that site, and we found some up in Titusville in the, I forget the name of the mobile home park now, but it's a very ritzy mobile home park on the golf course, probably, Commissioner Prichard probably knows what I'm talking about. Most expensive land in Borden County sits next to the Wetmans in Titusville. When we discovered this, we fought with Duda over the issue of how much their property was worth and how much we should have to pay for it. And, and we went to court to what was called an order of taking, where the county gets possession and title to the property, and they fought us tooth and nail on that. And we fought back tooth and nail. It took us two weeks to litigate the issue of an order of taking. Normally, it's a less than one-hour proceeding, where everybody walks in, stipulates, signs a document, puts the money in the bank, and they withdraw the money. This took two weeks to litigate, and it was appealed. We won the, we won the appeal, we won the litigation, eventually we settled because they knew we were going to fight. And we ended up settling for $2 million, not $9 million, and we got an extra 110 acres. So we ended up with 350 acres. And that's the Wetmans you have today, which is an international tourist attraction now. That was because we knew what we were doing, we had experience in it. I'll give you one more example. Recently, DOT went to trial on a case involving the CBS at the corner of Babcock and 192. And the issue there was whether the taking of a strip of landscaping would cause them $2.5 million in damages. The reason that CBS claimed it did was because there was about 25 or 30 parking spaces that were going to be eliminated because the City of Melbourne wouldn't allow them to rebuild the, or use that facility unless they rebuilt the parking spaces somewhere else on the property. Well, that meant that they were going to lose 30 spaces, and 30 spaces to CBS is worth a lot of money. So they went ahead and tried the case, and DOT lost. They paid $2.5 million for the taking, and they paid about one-third of that for the attorney's fees and the costs. We had the identical situation on Barnes Boulevard. We had a 7-Eleven at the corner of Morel and Barnes that had a strip of landscaping. And because that landscaping was there, they had to move the landscaping back, and five or six parking spaces were going to be lost, which is worth a lot of money to do a 7-Eleven, too. But before we ever filed the plans, Mr. Denninghoff, me, Eden Bentley, the City of Rockledge, all sat down and tried to figure out a way to avoid that problem because we knew it was going to be a problem before we ever filed it, before we ever submitted the plans for, for the litigation. And we came to the conclusion that we could initiate a waiver program in the City of Rockledge so the city could waive any damages caused by lack of a landscape buffer, for example. They wouldn't have to rebuild the landscape buffer, and that would save us the claim of damages. In that case, the damage claim turned out to be $383,000 for removing the landscape buffer, which is this 10-foot strip of property that was maybe 100 feet long. We settled the case for $38,000 because we had the waiver before it was ever got to that point. That's because we knew what we were doing. So you need people to know what they're doing when they're litigating, and that's what we do some of, is we do a lot of eminent domain because of the cases we're involved in, the road projects we're involved in. And that's the experience you're going to be losing within five years. We need to replace that. And for that reason, you're going to see my budget actually asks for an increase this year, $45,000. Now let me explain a little bit more about why I think that's warranted. First thing I'm going to do is take you through what the private practice charges for services, legal services. And the first thing I looked at was the hourly rates they're charging. And this is taken from the Florida Bar 192016 survey. You'll see here that 81% of the lawyers that responded to this survey reported that they had made between 201 to 300, over $350 per hour, with the median hourly rate figured out by the Florida Bar at $300 per hour. Then we looked at billable hours for each of the private law firms, and they reported that the average law firm, more than 54% of them anyway, had about 1,700 hours that are billable each year. We have nine lawyers, so I just multiply that times 1,700 to come up with 15,300 as the number of billable hours that we would have the equivalent of in our office. Did the same thing for paralegals. The median hourly rate was, was $120 according to the Florida Bar. And we have two paralegals, and the average number of hours that we use was 1,000, which is on the low side because we don't use them as, as paralegals as much as the private practice does. That's another 2,000 hours. So I put all that together, at the hourly rate for lawyers, if you're paralegals, the total cost came out to $4,830,000 for the same service we provide in our office. Now I'm going to show you with some comparisons to counties that of similar size, and I say similar size, between 350,000 and 700,000. You know, the highlighted county is Brevard County, and you know, on the far right-hand column, the hourly rate, if you divide the budget by the total number of hours that I just mentioned to you, which is 15,300, the average for every office, assuming that everyone has the same kind of a staffing and the same kind of rates. The count, Brevard County is down at $103 per hour compared to, say, Collier County at $206 per hour. Now, I made an error in the math because I based the $103 on the budget of $1.536 million, which is last year's budget. In actuality, that 103 is based on this year's proposed budget, which is 1.5881, as opposed to 1.536, it's $45,000 more. So the actual number is $100 per hour if you go on last year's budget, which is the lowest of all that group of counties in that cluster. Now, I've had one local attorney comment that the county attorney's office is, quote, "terribly underpaid," end quote. I won't tell you who that is because I don't want to give away any names, but I think the evidence is mounting that we are in that position. The first thing that I would bring to mind is that we have one lawyer that we've been training in eminent domain and various litigation that we are involved in, who has been here probably five or six years. And she is now moving on to Orange County for considerably more money than we're paying her. We have another attorney, and by what, we have an intern program with the county where we take interns from the state of Florida, from Florida State, from University of Florida, from Miami. We've taken them from University of California Hastings, we've had them from New Jersey, we've had them all over the place, all over the country, to come in and spend time with us every summer. And I've had the pleasure of cherry picking some of these fellows to work for us, and I think four of the people we have working for me right now are former interns. So they're very, very sharp people, very smart people, they're very accomplished in terms of their academic performance, you know, the thing they don't have is experience. We've been out training these folks, we lost one, we're about to lose a second one, I think, with 60/40 chance that she's going to leave. And it's because, partially because we can't pay them enough, or we don't pay them enough. So it's my proposal that we need to increase, my budget at least, to accommodate some higher salaries for these folks to stay, because what experience we do have, we need to keep. If we don't keep it, we're going to be in trouble. And if you don't have that experience, you don't know what you're doing, or you don't know what problems you should know about, you're going to lose in the long run, you're going to lose a lot of money. A million dollars and $2 million is a big difference, and that's the kind of cases we get involved in sometimes. So summary for the presentation is that we're asking for $1.581 million, which is $103 an hour, and your equivalent in private practice, if you care, if you include the paralegals, is about 318 per hour, which is a substantial difference if you were to hire outside to do this. And there's the transition issues I just discussed. And the last one there, I'm thinking it's going to cost you at least $100,000 a year to get anybody with some experience in eminent domain specifically, because we do a lot of And the reason we do a lot of that is because you've got Barnes Boulevard, which we've been working on for years, St. John's Cheddar Parkway we've been working on, but now we have the northern part that we're going to be moving into. And about five years from now, you can look for Washingtonia, which is going to connect St. John's to DePierre. And that is going to be a very, very complicated acquisition because the Florida power lines go out there, the gas lines are out there, and they're all narrowly confining the type of taking we can take, and those folks fight. So they're going to have to know what they're doing. We've had a lot of road construction issues, as Mr. Denninghoff can attest to, in terms of problems that we have to get involved in, in terms of interpreting contracts and seeing what the remedies are in the contracts. We've had increased development utilities issues as the economy bounces back, it's going to get more intense. And the biggest two things we've had working lately is the Indian River Lagoon and the Amateur Sports Initiative with USSA. That's a lot of contract work, it's a lot of preparation of contracts, a lot of negotiations, a lot of discussions. And again, we have to have people that know what they're doing. That's what I want to have to say. Any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Knox. Thank you for that perspective that comes from 22 years, how long you've been here?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four years of being here.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can you help me with, with some of those numbers? These attorneys that work for these firms, if they bill out at $350 an hour, is that actual attorney making the full $350 an hour, or does that then get divvied amongst the partners and that attorney may get a small fraction of that billable hour?
That goes into your gross, gross income for the whole firm.
Okay, so that, so these, these private attorneys may not be making as much?
No, the average, I think the average firm partner on average, I think, was making $150,000 a year, and that was the mean. So there were some higher than that, some lower than that. And if you've been around for 24 years, for example, as a senior partner, you're going to make probably well over that, probably twice that much.
Thank you. And, and when you retire, and I, I don't know these numbers, but if you've been with the county 20-some years, I imagine you're, and I'm looking at your salary right now, the FRS contribution will be substantially higher than what the private sector may offer? Is that a fair assessment?
That's possible. I don't really know what the private sector offers in that, in terms of...
Well, I'm sure...
They probably set up their own 401ks and things like that.
I'm sure that, you know, well over $100,000 a year, probably closer to $150,000 a year, I'm guessing, in an FRS payment is probably much higher than what those private...
Yeah, I don't, it's down $150,000 a year, I can tell you that.
It's, it's six figures.
It's like $5,000 a month.
So, but it, but anyway, and let me ask you, you have nine attorneys, do nine attorneys work in your office, or do some work from home?
They work at the office most of the time, sometimes I let them work at home.
Okay. And then your office, are there any other offices you know that have lunch hours where they're not available between the hours of 12 and 1:00 as posted on your door?
Lawyers offices, probably, I don't, I don't know. There probably aren't, but I let them go from 12 to 1:00.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I want to know how many people are working from home. I didn't know that.
I have one that works from home one day a week because she has this problem with her children, or she did have a problem, she doesn't have that anymore, but they just, are no longer in that situation.
And, and I, I agree, obviously, I mean, if I could give everybody a raise, I would be on, of course, I want to make everybody happy, but I don't know that these numbers are a fair comparison, given that many of these counties have municipalities within them, and you can't just base it on population, you have to base it on how much area is county versus, I'm not saying, again, that, but I don't think that this is a fair comparison. This just happens to put us at the bottom of this list.
Well...
Because every county is unique.
Every county is unique, but I think it's a fair comparison because the city, this county has 16 municipalities too, and they know other counties have many, many municipalities. Some don't, some do.
Right.
I got to say, since you're on your way out, and this isn't going to affect you very much, that I would, I would guess you're giving us a pretty good recommendation for the health of the county, and that weighs a lot with me right now. We're going to have to find funding, I know, and we're working on pay increases, but this has been the basic theme through most of the department heads, and I agree, I mean, where we are, it's, it's not so hard for them to hire in now because they made a 10% pay adjustment, and I know we're going to have to do that, but I know legal is very important. We have a few departments that probably have more benefits to us as far as lowering costs, and yours is one of them. And plus, you keep us from getting in a lot of trouble, too. So I, I hear you. So I just want you to, I appreciate your recommendation.
And one other point that I think needs to be emphasized, you are leaving, and so I think it would behoove us to think about your replacement sooner rather than later. We don't want to be, start, we don't want to start looking next January and wind up in a situation like we are with our county manager and hire your replacement two months after you leave, or three months after you leave, so.
Maybe that's where that extra money comes from, is trying to get a transition that happens and it overlaps, rather than, you know, hit the budget with it now.
When are you leaving?
Just a thought. Yeah, I didn't, I don't, I was never told the date that you were leaving.
March 31st, next year.
What's that?
March 31st of next year.
Okay.
So just put that on your forefront of your brains, because we will be talking about that in the near future. Any other questions for the county attorney? County manager's office.
Thank you, Commissioners. Let me, I just want to answer one prior question before I start, and that is that the, the travel reimbursement rate is 53.5 cents an hour, consistent with what the, from the IRS standard. And that's, that's just current board policy, but we will send you a copy of that policy as well, so, you know, once again, you know, we're prepared to discuss it and modify it in any way that the board deems appropriate. For the county manager's office presentation, it would be rather brief. Our mission is to provide organizational leadership and primarily focused on implementing board policies and directives that we receive, and to, and to manage the available resources to achieve the desired outcomes that you provide to us. And the last one on our mission is relative to facilitate organizational strategic planning. And I want to... And I want to share with you what I've already shared with directors in terms of where we want to be focused. First area is going to be to promote inclusiveness, and by that, really, we were talking about listening to what everyone has to say, respecting what they have to say, and being extraordinarily responsive, which is something that's been important to me for a lot of years, but it's especially important to me now. And I can assure you that, you know, I, the leadership team and all is doing all it can to make sure that that's one of our top priorities for the board and the public. Second, it's to address funding, because we know how important it is for maintenance and enhancement of the county's road system. And that will be in all three areas that the board has that interest. First, we're working right now, as you know, on the maintenance side, but then on the reconstruction side and the capacity side. And that will be, remain a top priority for us. Third area is lagoon stewardship and its importance in terms of accelerating lagoon restoration by leveraging and matching, you know, leveraging available resources and matching and partnering with local, state, and federal partners. A fourth area, and one that the board's already expressed its interest in as well, is employee compensation and benefits, to make sure we address that as best we can. And you'll be seeing, we'll be coming next week on a workshop, requesting the board a workshop date on group health insurance, which is one of the most significant parts of the benefit package that employees receive. And I know the board is very interested in that, so we'll be coming back. Hopefully, the board will approve that workshop in July. And the final area that we want to, initiative we want to stay focused on is, you know, continually trying to improve the organization internally. We have lean six signal, we already had that dialogue. Continuing employee development and leadership training throughout the organization to put us on a position to be able to utilize employees from within and provide them those opportunities to step up when the need arises, and that will continue to increase based on the demographics of our organization. You've heard a little bit, maybe even a lot of it today, but that will be a continuing issue, so we will want to stay focused on that. In terms of organizational chart, the county manager, we have limited staff. We have, as you can see, basically, there are three assistant county manager positions, but I'll tell you, for a lot of years, we've operated with two. And, you know, as long as I'm in the interim role, you know, my goal is going to be to continue to provide the flexibility to remain with two. And so there'll be additional transition with Venetta's retirement in July, but we will, we will do what we need to do to provide the board the opportunity to look at that, and hopefully, the county manager that the board selects to lead the organization to look at that and provide that flexibility moving forward. With that, our compensation, financial compensation and benefits makes up over 97% of the, its salaries and benefits in the county manager's office. There's very little for operating expenses and capital outlay, but as the board already had in prior dialogue, you know, there were other areas which are covered under general government. We've already covered those areas for, you know, memberships, things like that. So that, the way the county manager's budget is structured, that those items were under general government, and we've had that dialogue. So there really isn't anything other than that in the manager's budget, but I'm happy to answer any questions that board members might have. And that's it for our presentation.
Board questions, thoughts?
Mr. Abate, Mr. Witten had a car stipend, a pretty generous car stipend in there.
Right.
Is that, and I've looked at a couple other contracts, county manager contracts, is that standard operating procedure? And, you know, there's also some staff travel in here, and again, that's different, but are you aware of that?
That was a negotiated item in the contract, that when he came on board, I believe there was a similar one for the prior county manager. And so that was stuff that, and at the time, those, as I recall, there was a commissioner on each of those negotiation panels, who then worked with the consultant that was involved and negotiated with the candidates at the time, and that contract came back for the board's approval. So that's how it's operated. And just, you know, to indicate that those terms were the same terms that are applying right now, and that's the same way it's been done for, the board has operated in the past whenever you've had an interim. So, you know, and if the board wished to change any of that, of course, that's the board's, you know, that's the board's choice. If you want to do that, then, you know, we can make any modifications. But that's how it's operating today, and it's just continuation of the agreements that were in place. And that's just how the board has chosen to do it in the past.
And I'm not going to say anything you don't already know, because you understand business. I think when we're looking at the new county manager, those are the things we'll negotiate, whether we pay them less and give them more benefits, or a benefits package. So I'm guessing, from what I'm hearing, you're saying, and my experience in the past, is that we'll have a lot of input on the salary package that we give to the county manager, what it's comprised of.
Yes, we'll come back to the board, obviously, for approval, whatever's negotiated.
Yeah. I'm guessing we're not going to get it for as cheap as we had Stockton either. I imagine that that's going to be a little bit of a bump, and we're going to have to pay the new county manager.
I wouldn't try to guess where that, where that might be at this point.
That was good.
One more question?
Yes, sir.
I see you have three administrative assistants. Can you explain the position of the agenda coordinator? I understand that, you know, someone puts together agenda, and I'm sure they do other things than the agenda that is put out every other week. Can you explain what other, what other role that individual plays?
I.
That is outside, sorry, the administrative assistant role.
Right. And she's responsible for doing all the scheduling and all the functions related to agendas, which doesn't just end, you know, I mean, it starts very early in the process. We get agendas, you know, before the commission meeting, we're already receiving other agendas. They're all processed through that person. There are significant modifications made to drafts, the coordination of all those agendas going through the assistant county managers, going back to the departments, going to the county attorney's office for, you know, and the input of other people that are needed as we process it, to make sure that the packages are complete with all the attachments, et cetera. And she makes a lot of the modifications herself as we go. So it's not something that just happens on the day before the board meeting. It's a continual process that she's involved in. That is her primary duty as the agenda specialist.
Any other thoughts, comments?
I just want to say you're doing a really good job right now stepping up.
Thank you.
You know, me, I'm the last person that says I want to make sure I'm paying you enough money, but that was going to be, I actually wrote it down for you, because I didn't want to embarrass you by putting you on the spot. I wanted to make sure that while you're in this interim role, that you're being compensated properly, because I've seen that before, where they didn't want to, the interim didn't want to go to the board and ask, and there was no policy in place. But I'm glad to see that if you have the weight of the world on your shoulders, you're at the very least being paid while you're in that position.
I have no idea.
So now that I've embarrassed you and put you on the spot.
Well, I think I answered the question. Were you asking me the question?
Well, yeah, I mean, when the vehicle thing was brought up, I figured that.
Yeah, the answer was that the transition and was that it continued, just as it has in the past, under the terms that the former manager's contract was.
So just to be clear, you're being paid right now what the former, we've given you a salary.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I too, I too am very stingy.
And I'm also saying.
And thank you, you're doing a, yeah, you're doing a wonderful job stepping into the hardest time, and you deserve every penny of it.
Thank you.
Okay. You have Ag and Extension Services.
I put them in the cups, you can't see.
Trying to liven things up a little bit. Go Gators, right?
Absolutely.
No?
Yes.
Go Vols?
Plus you're a Canes fan.
So I'll be brief, in the spirit of time. I will be brief. There's our mission. I think most of you know what our mission is. We provide scientific, research-based information to the members of our community. We provide information that impacts them economically, environmentally, and socially. There's a glance at our revenues. This does not include the University of Florida side of things. We'll get to that in a moment. But this is what it looks like in our budget right now. You just see $54,000 charges for services. That does fluctuate, of course, depending on how many people participate in our programs. Grants that also will fluctuate as we earn grants. Rent, we charge $6,400 annually for the Department of Plant Inspection under FDACs to rent two offices in our building. $38,000 in transfers, that comes from Natural Resources for stormwater education that we provide. And then, of course, you see our general fund transfer and our statutory reduction. And then on the expenditure side, pretty simple. Compensation of benefits takes up the majority of our budget, of course. Operating expenses, capital outlay, this was a big number for this one year, because we had some expenses that we wanted to, some things that we wanted to do to update the building, the office, and then our transfers, which is our cost allocation plan. And then for those of you that like tables, prefer those over pie charts, this is pretty much the same information, but it just looks a little different. Charges for services, I just want to talk a little bit about what those are. Those are our class fees, those are farmer's market revenue. So vendors who come to the farmer's market and pay to be at the market, that generates revenue, and a portion of that goes to support a salary position, not the entire salary, but a portion of that salary, and also operating expenses for the farmer's market. Continuing education credits, we provide those for certain audiences, pesticide study books, my Brevard Yard Program, which is focused on enhancing development or restoration of the Indian River Lagoon. Field visits, those are where we go out and we help a farmer, or we go out and we help a landscaper, an HOA, any number of audiences that we may actually go out into the field and work with them. And then, of course, our 4H clubs. And then you see our expenditures there, compensation benefits, so on and so forth. The same thing that you saw on the pie chart, just in table format. So a little bit of breakdown of our expenditures, just a little bit more detail there. And you see, I'm looking there, okay. So utilities, I put an asterisk there, because utilities, that also includes the facility that's being used by the sheriff for the bomb squad, and it also includes the landscape operations facility used by Public Works. So we pay for their water and their electricity. So just a couple of things there. And then also the bomb squad building facility, we also oversee the maintenance and repairs for that building sometimes. Recently, their air conditioner went out, and the sheriff's department did pay for that air conditioner. So sometimes we work things out. We partner on those kinds of things. And then, this is just an overview of our folks, how many folks we have working in the office. These are our county-funded, general-funded positions here. We have a maintenance worker, we have three secretaries, one is a receptionist at the front desk, one's an administrative assistant to the director, and then one is an administrative secretary. We have two 4H program assistants. These are boots on the ground for the 4H program. That's kind of a new thing we did this year. And so this is actually in, this is, I think we started this in October. We're trying something new, and hopefully that will, I'm sure it's going to be successful. And then we have our agriculture faculty member. He is 50% paid by general fund and 50% paid by mosquito control. Oh, wow, this thing goes fast. Let's get back up here. Sorry about that. And then this is a look at our faculty. These are our faculty who have split positions with the University of Florida. So over on the far right column there, you can see what the percentage breakdowns are. That's sometimes a little bit easier to look at it that way. So you can see for our marine faculty, county pays 73% of that salary, and the university pays 27%. And you can go down through, and you see a lot of variances, and those variances are things that are just negotiated when those, or were negotiated, when those positions were created, you know, however long ago that those positions were created. Now, we also have a very large program in our office that is funded by USDA SNAP Ed Grant, and that is the Family Nutrition Program. And that consists of five program assistants, a public health specialist, and a part-time office assistant. These folks go into schools, specifically Title I schools, work with youth on health, healthy living issues. You know, the goal there is to reduce obesity, reduce diabetes. Those are probably the top two goals there with that program. They also work with seniors in senior centers and on the same, same thing, reducing obesity, reducing diabetes, improving their health. And we also go into, we work with Parks and Rec, we collaborate with them through the summertime when school is out, and we work with them on a lot of their summer camps. And then, this is university funding, and this is old data. I haven't got the new data yet, but this is for the university's fiscal year 1415. And these are some of the services that are provided to us through the university. This is, this could be a little bit different now, because I think we don't have the dairy agent anymore, because obviously, we don't have a dairy industry in Brevard County, right? So we don't have that. And so there's been some changes there, but I just wanted, can you give you a snapshot of what those, what those folks do for us here in Brevard County? And then from the, on the university side, this is professional development and operating support. Professional development is really important part of a faculty's career. And so the university does provide some professional development opportunities, financial opportunities. We have an annual symposium at the university, where we go and we learn about current research and those kinds of things. And then pesticide certification exam reimbursement, that actually comes from FDACs. So for every pesticide exam that we administer, we get a dollar figure back. And I don't recall what that actual dollar figure is. Publications and editorial support for the nine faculty in the office, we get $1,700 a year. That helps us just buy things at the university bookstore, the university IFAS bookstore, and those are things, oftentimes, when we buy those, we might buy a book that we're going to use as a reference, or we might buy giveaway items, like little ID cards that we'll give to participants in programs, and things like that. And then postage, the university pays for our postage machine in the office. I think postage used to be a bigger deal than it is nowadays. So, you know, that's something that may change in the future, but that is a metered machine that we use to mail things on the university side. Budget trends over time, just looking at those quickly. You know, you can see from 2006 to 2018, we really took a nosedive around 2010, 2012. That was primarily in positions. Travel, we reduced travel significantly back in those days. I talk about those days like they were a long, long time ago, but I kind of feel like they were. And, of course, operating, we lost a lot of dollars there and in capital as well. Trends and issues, since 2010, we lost two secretarial staff. We lost a horticulture program assistant. We lost a 4H development faculty member. We also lost a few other things on the university side, because at that time, as you know, a lot of organizations were going through some significant budget challenges. So on the university side, we lost our agriculture program leader position, we lost a 4H program assistant position. So those significantly impacted those programs. We also had to close our Palm Bay satellite office due to budget cuts. So that was, that was, you know, that was sad to see that go, because that's where the largest population in the county is. So that hurt us a little bit. We have fewer vehicles, we have some pretty unreliable vehicles. And we also closed the use of the county facility at night, because we had a full-time employee that would work at night and would open the building and close the building for outside groups. And so we ended up moving that person full-time to the day, so that we could utilize his services a little bit better. And so we closed the facility to any outside groups. And those would be groups outside of extension, where a faculty member's not going to be present, or a staff member's not going to be present. And then a snapshot of our vehicles, we have four vehicles for nine faculty and two program assistants. And you can see there, they're fairly old. I guess if they were personal vehicles, you would, you would maybe not mind that so much, but since these vehicles do travel around quite a bit. And they're really, you know, someone in, someone bought a three-quarter ton, four-wheel-drive pickup truck way back when, I guess what, 2005, and the thing gets about 11 miles to the gallon. And it's just not, it's not conducive to what we do, although we do use it sometimes to tow things. But, wow, you know, it's not a vehicle that you want to drive from Cocoa to Palm Bay to teach a class and drive back. You know, it's a vehicle that we try to keep parked as much as possible, because it does use a lot of fuel. So that's it in a nutshell. Of course, I could go on forever, but I know you all don't want me to. Questions? By the way, this is a carrot that was grown at the Wickham Park Community Garden. We're pretty proud of that carrot.
As well you should be.
Thank you.
Comments from the board?
Comments from the board? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Okay, commissioners, you've heard quite a few presentations from me. So today, I get to present to you my office and what our budget is and what we do. So I will start out with our mission statement. And the mission of the Budget Office is to promote fiscal responsibility and transparency by developing sound fiscal management practices to effectively allocate and manage scarce resources in accordance with the vision and priorities set forth by the Board of County Commissioners. And so, our goal is to provide the board with timely, accurate information to help facilitate decision-making. And we also want that information to be available to the public so we can build that community trust. Here's our organization chart. We have a total of seven people on staff. That's me, and then, we have four budget analyst positions. Those are the folks sitting behind me at this table. We have one vacancy right now. That person went on to the private sector about two weeks ago, so we're anxious to fill that. We also have two special projects coordinators that work on a variety of different things. We'll be working on the inter-local agreements with the CRAs. We're putting together matrix, things of that nature. And so, the services that the Budget Office provides, we coordinate with all of the departments, the charter offices. We work closely with county finance to provide budget management and oversight. Of course, we formulate the millage rates, which is a big task. There are a lot of requirements associated with truth and millage laws and as well as other state statutes. We always have to pay attention to the different compliance requirements of local ordinances as well. We also are involved in process improvements. Our budget analysts are, most of them are lean Six Sigma, have been through the Lean Six Sigma training and are working on projects. We're also involved in capital planning and cash flow forecasting, and we work with the departments on all of these things. And we also coordinate and monitor any FEMA reimbursement grants. We're working on Hurricane Matthew right now. We're still in the process of closing out some of those 2004 storms. So as you can imagine, that's very time-consuming. And so, I wanted, I listed some initiatives, but I know we're short on time. So just, I want to highlight the first one. Transparency is something that you'll hear from me continually, and I know it's important to this board, and I know it's important to the public. And we do want to build that trust, so we've been moving in that direction. And the more we can do to get there, we're always looking at that. We're working with IT. We have implemented on our website several tools to help facilitate that. We have quarterly reports. We have a budget dashboard where citizens can go in and choose what department or program they want to look at and see a multi-year history of budget versus actual. And so, again, we're always looking at ways to improve transparency. Our budget is just under $600,000, and we're very lean. 96% of that is compensation and benefits, operating expenses. Most of that's office supplies, operating supplies. And then, we do have capital outlay at $3,500. We will be reducing that request next fiscal year. We were able to purchase three computers with the capital outlay in this fiscal year, so we only have a need to purchase one more computer next year. And that's the extent of my presentation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Good job. You win.
Thank you.
Moving right along, SCG-TV.
Commissioner?
Jill, it was perfect to segue into my discussion, so I appreciate the mention of transparency. So I'm the communications director, and I want to mention this upfront because it all ties into my budget presentation that I, in that capacity, I'm also over SCG-TV, and I'm also the public information officer for emergency management. And about 18 months ago, Fire Rescue lost its public information officer, and I was given the opportunity to take over public information for Fire Rescue. And so, of course, I jumped at that as well. So, and that consumes a lot of my time because I get phone calls all evening for people asking about people hitting the road and fires and things like that. So, and I answer all those calls, and the media are savvy. They use emails, and they also use text messages. But the only ones I don't answer, I got a call one morning at 3:00 from ABC, "Good Morning America," because someone had been bitten by what the chief calls the toothy sea creature. And that's the call I did not answer. I said, unless it's Frank Abate's name on the phone at 3:00 in the morning, I'm not going to answer it. So, so here's my budget. First of all, our mission, just short and brief, it's all about transparency. It's all about telling our good story. And it's also about the safety and keeping our residents informed. I have the smallest budget in the county. Most of it, I have a four-person staff, and most of it is compensation and benefits. We have other contracted services. We have engineers, an engineer that takes care of our equipment when it breaks down. Under expenditures, I wish I knew where that $19,000 was. When I looked to see what it was, somehow, in my budget, I pay the county's AT&amp;T bills. So that's not my phones. That's everybody's phones, so. So the salary credit is something I want to mention. Last year, before the fiscal year, it was brought to my attention that because a lot of what we do is emergency management-related, that there was federal dollars that were available for social media. And that was through emergency management, actually, through the FEMA. And with the county's foresight, we were able to leverage that money and draw money from the general fund to bring on a social media person that handles our social media campaign and is also helping organize those efforts. And she's done a great job. This is really, just briefly, what that salary credit is and basically what her responsibilities are. She handles social media for emergency management and the county, and she also is helping organize, we have 23 departments in the county, and she's helping organize the social media campaigns for all of those departments because what we realized recently is that a lot of them have begun campaigns, and they're all over the place. And we want to speak as one voice when we speak for the county, so she's helping organize that effort. These are other services that we provide. I have a production manager, so he basically runs the SCG-TV office. He also does a variety of other jobs, and they're all very important, and he does a great job. I have a programmer. We're a 24/7 broadcasting station. It's all government television. We do our own in-house PSAs, but we also air meetings from area municipalities. And we have 59% of our programming are meetings of the board and the TPO and other live events that occur here at the Government Center. And then, of course, I'm the guy with the words, so I do the quarterly report. It used to be an annual report, but this year, we decided that instead of just doing an annual report that listed our accomplishments from the previous year and our goals for the coming year, that really what I wanted to do and what we wanted to do through Frank's direction, is start letting people know on a quarterly basis what projects we have underway, where we're getting on those projects, whether we've completed them or we've got them set up for the next quarter. So it's really a much more transparent message to the citizens about what the county's doing. And it's much, these are things that are actually going on or have just been completed or are coming up, instead of just what our goals are for the coming year. So it's a much better publication. There used to be an employee newsletter that I put together once a quarter. Now, I do it every month, so we have 12 of those a year. I also do an employee profile every month, just to talk about the good deeds and activities and the outside charitable things that our employees are doing. There's some really amazing stories involved there. And then, of course, we handle other things like meeting setups for citizens that come in and hold hearings here or meetings. And, of course, we set up for the board meetings and things like that. So we're a little bit all over the place. So why is social media so important? I want to address that because that's where more and more communication is occurring. I mean, if you want to get, you know, if there was an accident on the interstate that closed down the southbound lanes of the interstate, I could put a press release together, but by the time that gets done, that accident's either cleared up or it's old news. Whereas with Twitter and Facebook, you can get it out there immediately, and you can generate a conversation. People can ask us questions, and we can respond immediately versus, you know, and we are. We are very responsive. So when people ask questions, we can respond to them. We can let them know what's going on. It's a really good safety aspect for our community. And if there's an emergency or anything like that, we can get the word out almost instantaneous. So here's our impact with social media. So, and we have 30,554 followers on Facebook. The vast majority of those are not millennials like you would expect, but they're more of the, I forget what it's called, Generation X. Let me double-check that real quick just to make checking.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, Generation X, and then, my class, the baby boomers, and then, followed by the millennials. And the vast majority of our Facebook audience is in the Melbourne and Palm Bay areas, so the southern part of the county. And the majority are women, 74%. Likewise, with Twitter, the majority of our Twitter followers are women. And, again, in the age, the vast majority in the age range of 25 to 54. And I was going to mention, too, that in the last fiscal year, in this past fiscal year, our Facebook, county Facebook traffic has increased by 22%. Our emergency management traffic has increased by 118%. And a lot of that was probably due to a major storm event we had. And our fire followers has increased by 18, almost 19%. So this is the kind of way we use that information. We keep citizens informed. It allows immediate messaging. It allows real-time updates. So if someone says, hey, when is FPNL going to be in my neighborhood to restore power? We can check with FPNL, and we can answer that question, so people know. We can also dispel rumors. People like to post things because they have negative opinions about the county or various people that work for the county or whatever. And, or they may say, you know, I heard the county's quit doing mosquito control. We can respond to those rumors or those statements right away and clarify it. And because we are the authoritative voice, you know, people know that, you know, we're not just somebody talking. We're Brevard County, and we're responding to that rumor, so. The numbers below there are just kind of a look at, like, during a hurricane event, recently, we had, you know, we posted 1,082 Facebook posts. We've had a lot of wildfires, brush fires lately. We've had over, almost 3,000 posts on those. Where you see road closure, 76. When you do an analytical research, if you do road closure, we got 76 hits on that. But bear in mind, you could do every, each and every highway. You could do I-95. You could do US-1, and so on and so on, and get different analytics come back, depending on where that accident might have been or where the road closure was. And sometimes, it's not labeled a road closure. Sometimes, it's called a lanes blocked or something like that. So that's just some general analytical information on what kind of social media traffic we get. So here's some more of the transparent, transparency-type things that we do. We do flyers for county events. We do PSAs for, you know, various services we have. The Save Our Indian River Lagoon is a promo that we put together for the Citizens Oversight Committee meetings that we're airing live on SCG-TV. The annual report. And some of the Facebook posts that you see there are responses that we gave to questions that we received, just so you can kind of get an idea of how we respond to those types of things. And then, of course, you'll see us at the county board meetings taking resolution photos. And, of course, we get those out so y'all can pass them along to your constituents. We also do various digital publications. So I mentioned the quarterly report. There's also the employee newsletters, various flyers that we put together. 55.9% of the programming that we do on SCG-TV is locally produced. And then, I kind of do a breakdown there for you of where the other, how we basically spend the other hours of the day during the week of programming. So I should mention, as a public information officer for emergency management, every time there's a rocket launch, I get activated. And as you know, we've had, I think it was 32 rocket launches in the past year. And, of course, they don't always launch when they're supposed to. So I may be activated on Monday because there is a rocket launch on Monday. And if the rocket doesn't go, well, then, I'm activated again on Tuesday when it does. So there may be 32 launches, but I may have been activated 40 times. So it depends on, you know, what's going on and when those rockets launch.
So we're going to have to hire a full-time rocket launch spectator.
Yeah, and I'm about to address that as well. That is correct.
Because if we're launching 150 a year, come five to eight years from now.
That's correct, right.
You're going to have to move in.
Right, no doubt. Some of the accomplishments from my department. Last year, we were awarded the Governor's Hurricane Conference Public Information Award. And that same year, we also received the Florida Emergency Preparedness Association Media Award for a hurricane awareness campaign that we put together. And then, just recently, Mayor Meehan from Melbourne called me on the phone. And I've met her, but she wouldn't know me if I was walking down the hall, although I would know her. But she went to a mayor's conference for the Florida League of Cities, and there was a representative from Facebook there. And he told the mayors in that room that the model for Facebook social media posts are Brevard County. So it was a real compliment to us, and she called me to tell me that just because she was that proud of us for doing that, so, and being recognized.
Well, I didn't know that either, so kudos to you and your staff.
So here's our critical needs. SCG-TV was started in 1999, and a vast amount of the equipment we have is 18 years, at least 18 years old. And the problem with adding new equipment to old equipment is like putting a, you know, computerized carburetor in a 1965 Chevy. It doesn't work with the rest of the equipment. So we need computer upgrades. There's the escalation of rocket launches, you mentioned, and I know you're aware of that. And then, growing production demands. We have a lot of great things our departments are doing, but we need to be able to do kind of like recruitment stuff for the Fire Rescue. And Commissioner Pritchett mentioned earlier about doing some type of recruitment stuff. We would love to do those things. We just don't really have, A, the manpower to do it, or B, the right equipment to do it. Because, you know, Indian, the Natural Resources Office recently asked if we could come out to the Indian River Lagoon and shoot something. Well, we could, but we don't have the lighting for that type of stuff. We just, all it would be is a camera taking a video, so. Those are our critical needs. And that's it.
Questions, comments from the board?
Yes, just one. How long is that? Was it a FEMA social media grant?
Yes, sir.
Is that a one-year grant?
No, sir. That's a recurring grant. So we'll get it again next year.
Okay. So there's no end to that?
To the best of my knowledge, unless we stop taking advantage of it, it's there for us.
Thank you.
I have to say, I was a fortunate one to be chair at the time, so I got to spend all my time with Hurricane Matthew at EOC with him. And it's, I was amazed at how fast information got out. He was on it all the time. It was amazing. Things would come through, within 30 seconds, it's already out. And it was crazy, especially when we went through, when water has been cut off. All that information was getting out because there was a lot of things that weren't right. There was rumors, and, you know, and then, couldn't get back, you know, couldn't get over the bridges. They were saying that. That wasn't true. But the difference it made, because I'm getting texts from people that are, stayed on Maridale, and they're panicking. And I go to him, and immediately, it's like, boom, it's gone. It's out. Everybody knows about it. So it was phenomenal how social media worked.
Thank you.
Really, now, it's, the way it ties into everything else, it's good. And appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You do a good job. I like the publications we're doing more often now. I think they're good quality. But I am interested in what that sea creature was now.
You know, the chief has a good way to describe that because unless we're in the water or unless we've seen it with our own eyes, there's really no telling, you know, what it might be. So instead of just labeling it a shark, and of course, you know, we've even said at some point in time that it had the markings of a shark-like bite kind of a thing. But actually, I think it gets more attention by calling it a toothy sea creature than a shark.
Yeah, it does.
Those are Russians.
Don, how long do you anticipate using your crystal ball? Is your antiquated equipment going to last before we have to bite the bullet by upgrading it high-definition, which is the current state of the art?
Well, speaking of the chief, the chief just said the other day, we're low-definition in a high-definition world. So, you know, the, obviously, television is going to, you know, ultra-high definition, and we're far from that. And I recently had a contractor come in just to kind of eyeball our equipment and just basing, you know, figuring... basing, you know, figures on current industry standards and not giving us the high-dollar figure and not giving us the lowest one. You know, it's estimated in the $500,000 range if we were to upgrade our entire office. Now, there's ways to do that where you're not paying that money all up front. You can lease it. But also, by doing that, you can scale down the amount of equipment we have in there now based on the new equipment that's available. So, where we have like three huge racks of equipment right now, we could probably do it all with one. So, it's less equipment. It's better equipment, and it requires, you know, a lot less room to put it in. It's just, you know, the problem that we have, we have, you know, we Band-Aid the equipment we have by bringing an engineer in, but you can only do that for so long. And like I said, you can't, it's hard to go in and hook up a new piece of equipment with the old equipment that's there, so.
Sure, it's like having a 1999 car.
Right.
At some point, parts just aren't available anymore.
Correct.
So, that's my question. One year, five years? Is it something you can, you can start phasing in new equipment?
Yeah, I would say within the next five years, we'd have to do that. I mean, I, it's not anything we have to do next year, but I'm definitely bringing these items to the table when I sit down with Frank on Monday to do budget talks so they're aware. And I've already submitted to John Denninghoff, you know, our capital improvement needs that, you know, are all unfunded, but in the years to come, we're going to have to get that rolling.
Are there any grants available?
That I haven't been able to check on yet. Right now, I was just trying to get an assessment of what kind of, you know, damages financially we were looking at. And so, now knowing with, in the $500,000 range, the question is how we might go about paying for it. So, one way that we have been told is that we could lease that equipment, basically lease it to own it, so it would be, you know, basically like paying off a car instead of having to buy it all up front. But yeah, definitely grants would be a great way to go, so we'll have to look into that.
So, maybe even a combination of grants and use the grant money to pay for the lease.
Right. And since we do use that equipment too, and I don't mean to throw Kimberly under the bus, but since we do use that equipment for emergency management purposes as well, who knows? There may be some kind of, you know, technology grants that are available through other emergency factions, so.
I'm looking for Kim. Is she in here?
She's watching me on TV.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to continue? It's 4:00 now. We have an executive session, as you know, following this that's going to take a while. So, we can continue going if that's the board's pleasure, or we can add these to the next workshop that we have.
Okay. Well, if you think that Executive Board...
I would anticipate it's going to go a while, the executive session, so I would, I would think we...
Most of us have been here since 9:00.
Are we going to go right into the executive session or wait around for an hour?
I would think we're ready.
I'd have to ask the county attorney if...
What's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to keep going or you want to?
I'd rather push this till next because I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I've been here since 9:00.
I'm fine right now, actually, today. I ate.
Keep going with this, or you want to go to executive session?
Let's go to executive session.
Because executive session's going to take a while.
Yeah, I'm going to go with executive session.
Okay, so we got...
I may win this one.
Are we going?
Holy moly.
Okay. Pursuant to Florida Statute 447 dot six zero five, all discussions between the county manager and his negotiating team representatives and the board relative to collective bargaining are closed and exempt from the provisions of the Sunshine Law, Florida Statute 286.011. The Board of County Commissioners is now adjourning to hold an executive session related to the IAFF collective bargaining negotiations under Florida Statute 447 dot six zero five. All discussions between the chief executive officer, the public employer or his or her representative and legislative body or the public employer relative to the collective bargaining shall be closed and exempt from the provisions of Statute 286.011.
Do you need a motion?
No, we don't need a motion. We're not, we're just moving.
Are we going to another room?
I'm in.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.